Rule that's unanimous and we'll go ahead and call the Fairway Estates meeting adjourned. Thank you all for indulging us on that and we'll call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, August 27th. All council members are present. Uh, we do have uh, the mayor's present, several, several members of his staff and. Yeah, we're right on time, as punctual as can be. And council staff is also present. Um, I planned it that way. Uh, and the first item of business here is going to be the pledge of allegiance, which will be led by Gage Broadhead, Gage Broadhead, who's our uh, West Jordan Youth Council Volunteer Advisor. Uh, Gage, come up.
And join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is our, is a special recognition, which is the oath of office for our West Jordan Youth Council. And we'll turn this one to our city recorder, Tangi Sloan, is going to come up and introduce and perform this. And we will get a picture.
Thank you, Chair Jacob. I'd like to invite the Youth Council to come up.
Warren's getting somebody right now, so.
And if you'll each raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name, do solemnly swear to support, obey, and defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of Utah. And the laws and ordinances. Of the City of West Jordan. And that I'll discharge the duties. Of my office with fidelity. Well done. Congratulations.
Stay there, stay there, stay there.
Hey, don't leave council. Did you want to come down and have a picture?
How about if we just stand back here? So we have a two-tier picture.
All right, parents, do you want to come get a good picture? Not off to the side, we can get straight on and.
Thank you. And the mayor wants to shake your hand. Thank you for being here. Um, Alan or Warren, do you want to give a quick, just two-minute or one-minute thing of what the Youth Council is, what they do, and how many more uh, Youth Council spots we might be able to fill?
I'll let Warren give you an update.
Sounds good.
Yes, absolutely. So we have fifteen uh, Youth Council members this year. We had nine last program. We got two applications this morning. Um, the program started technically with the school year and it will run through May. And as, as a question to the limits, we are maxed out at twenty. So if there is any additional interest, we would take them. So if there are any youth listening out there that are interested in being part of the West Jordan Youth Council, we would love to have you. Um, there's a landing page on our website for the Youth Council and um, our group right now largely represented from Copper Hills and West Jordan High Schools. Um, but a simple requirement is that you're high school age, nine through twelve, and you're a West Jordan resident. So we're happy with the group we have. We look forward to the things that they're going to accomplish this year.
Excellent. Thank you. And congratulations. And thank you for, for serving in our city. We appreciate it. Uh, the next item on the agenda for tonight is public comment. This is, this is the generic public comment. Feel free to come to the microphone and speak to anything uh, on the agenda or not on the agenda. Uh, let's see, we do have several public hearings on the agenda. Uh, I was going to count, but six. We have six public hearings. So if you're here to speak to any of those issues, your, your turn will come a little bit later in the meeting. Um, not to say we'll stop you if you do it now, but we'll stop you if you try to do it twice. Um, so go ahead and come up. You'll have three minutes and there'll be a timer on the screen any second. What is going off the screen? All right, there we go.
I represent a group.
Oh, give us your name too, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor Dirk Burton, Councilmember Bloom, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Whitelock, Councilmember Lamb, Councilmember Bedore, Councilmember Jacob, and Councilmember Shelton. I appreciate you giving me the time to bring awareness to the disease that I face. When you hear the word arthritis, I bet the first thing that comes to your mind is an older person with an achy knee, bad back, or misshapen fingers. I'm here to, tonight to help spread awareness that kids get arthritis too. Hi, my name is Gabby. I'm thirteen years old. I am in eighth grade. I attend Joel P. Jensen Middle School. I love gymnastics, my friends, and my family. I've lived in West Jordan for my entire life. Since before I can remember, my joints have hurt. My mom tells me it started at age two. My mom would take me to the doctors often because I was in so much pain and my joints would swell. Many times, they would say I had a sprained ankle, or I must have hurt myself even though I never did. Eventually, they told me to see a pediatric rheumatologist. Did you know there are only six in the Mountain State region? So getting an appointment is really hard. Current numbers show there are three hundred thousand kids in the U.S. with arthritis. There are only four hundred fifty pediatric rheumatologists in the U.S. That is about seven hundred patients per pediatric rheumatologist. By the time we were able to see this specialist, my joint flare would not be going on anymore, and doctors were not able to give me an accurate diagnosis. Finally, at age nine, I received an official diagnosis. Juvenile idiopathic arthritis, a type of autoimmune arthritis. My body is attacking itself. An ankylosing spondylitis is an inflammatory disease that over time can cause some of the bones in my spine called vertebrae to fuse. There is no current cure, only treatments to help prevent damage. I still remember that day and how sad and scared I was. I learned that a lot of things in my life were going to change. I learned that I was going to have to start taking medications that lowered my immune system and that I would probably get in more infections and stay sick longer than other kids my age. I learned that I was going to have to start taking medication that would make me sick to my stomach and make me throw up. I was so scared. My doctor told us the medication that she knew would be good for me. It was called Renflexis. She said that she would send their recommendation to my insurance company. Over two months later, we heard that my insurance company said I could not take that medication until I tried other ones. So I had to start a medication that my doctor didn't want me to be on, that made me sick to my stomach and has a cancer warning, and that did nothing for my arthritis. I had to take that medication for six months and repeat the process many times. I had to take Emerald Humira Cosentix. Finally, I got the medication that helped me, and it was called Renflexis, the medication that she wanted me to be on from the beginning. I had to suffer for many months and months because the insurance company would not allow me to take the medication that my doctor recommended. The doctors at the insurance company.
That was three. Let's go ahead and load up two more. She said she was representing a group. Sorry. There you go. Two more minutes. You're good.
Had never met me or examined me, and they got to tell me what I should take. At thirteen years old, I wake up stiff. I am constantly in pain, and I worry that my body will not be able to keep doing the sport that I love and have been doing since I was four years old. I have trouble at school because I have arthritis in my hands. I worry about the schoolwork I miss because of doctor's appointments or because I am sick, because of the immune suppression. I worry that if I go out with friends, I will not be able to keep up with everybody else. I worry about so many things no kid should have to worry about. I'm on medication now that has been helping me, but another thing that I worry a lot about is costs. Renflexis and similar medications like the one that I am on can cost up to twenty thousand a month. Renflexis has a co-pay assistance program, but I do not qualify for it because the medication is not FDA-approved for children. There is not much money to study juvenile arthritis and the medication we need. My parents have a lot of medical debt, trying to help take care of me and my sister. Now that I've told you some of the bad parts about it, I want to tell you some of the good parts. I have learned to persevere, and I'm a level six, seven gymnast, and I train five days a week, four hours a day. Arthritis taught me a lot that, about myself and that I have a lot of family in my community that all loves me, and arthritis has helped me meet a lot of new people. You may be asking, what can I do to help the cause? People help me, please help me fundraise for the Arthritis Foundation to help research advocacy and all people affected. Please join my team yearly walk at, yearly at the Walk for the Cure and Jingle Bell Run. Also, please make sure the people that you are voting for are those who support legislation that directly affect me and my life, like supporting step therapy, reform, and co-pay assistance. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. You practiced that and nailed the time limit just about perfectly. Anybody else who'd like to address the council? Come on up and make sure you give us your name.
My name is Sophia. Thank you, Mayor Dirk Burton, Councilmember Bloom, Councilmember Green, Councilmember Whitelock, Councilmember Lamb, Councilmember Bedore, Councilmember Jacob, and Councilmember Shelton. I appreciate you for letting me bring awareness to juvenile arthritis and share my story. I also have high-functioning autism, so public speaking can be difficult for me, but I like to do hard things. My name is Sophia. I am fifteen years old, and I attend West Jordan High School. I am on the drill team, and I dance at Gravity Dance Center. I did not get diagnosed with arthritis until last year. I kept on going to the doctor for ankle pain, but they kept on telling me it was a sports injury. I finally got referred to the rheumatologist at Primary Children's. And from there, I was diagnosed with an MRI. I was scared from this diagnosis because my little sister had it too. And I am on, I was told that I should be on Humira, but the insurance company said I couldn't. So I had to go through many medications, just like my sister. I had to try methotrexate and SEDS, and now I'm currently on Humira. The medications that I take lower my immune system, and I catch illnesses easier when I get them. I will stay sick for longer, and many times I cannot, I get sicker than normal kids. Now that I am only two eight years away from being an adult, I am wondering how this disease will affect my life. I will become an adult. There are sixty million adults in the U.S. diagnosed with arthritis, but I also have many positive things that have come out of this. I've learned that I can do hard things and that I have friends and um, community that love me. I've met many friends from around the country. Please help me raise money for the Arthritis Foundation and spread awareness and advocate and raise money. This can be a hidden disease, and I would like you to remind everyone that not every disease and disability is visible. Please be kind to all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to address the council on any other topics in the room who'd like to address, come and speak? This is usually when we have to stop the stampede of people. I'm just kidding. Go ahead, come on up.
Thanks, and I am speaking for a group, just FYI.
Okay, change it to five and go ahead and give us your name and.
Thank you.
Who you're representing and let us, go ahead.
Sure. So my name's Elena Samuels. I'm a resident homeowner in West Jordan. I reviewed the uh, budget proposal and re-watched the truth and taxation hearing on August thirteenth, which I attended. I do not believe a three and a half percent property increase is justified at this time. Um, as I suggested on August thirteenth, perhaps a small increase could have been justified. However, the three and a half percent is just too high and not supported by available data points. I forgot to mention this last time, I actually manage projects and budgets for a living, so I kind of took a deep dive in the budget proposal. Um, I'd like to share some thoughts actually about the hearing, particularly about data points. I believe only six members of the public attended. Of those six, uh, only four spoke during the public comment section. I was third to speak. Both myself and the person after me both expressed our surprise that anyone would enthusiastically be in favor of this large increase. Uh, as the previous two people before has, had expressed, I learned afterward uh, that those two people are both former city council members, Chris McConaughey and Robert Bennett. I feel, A, that should have been disclosed, but B, more importantly, does not accurately reflect the opinions and concerns of the majority of West Jordan city residents. One of the data points supporting my standpoint is that the City of West Jordan did receive over eight hundred thousand in new property growth taxes. That money is not already spoken for, for things like drains, as a few other council members had suggested during that hearing. I reviewed the breakdown of how those additional new growth funds are planned to be utilized. And it really does appear we could more wisely use those funds. There's some things in there like interns and other things that just didn't track, uh, at least in my opinion. I agree from the rest of that discussion at the hearing that the city could be more creative uh, in managing how our funds and budget are spent. I really don't think that high, that three and a half percent uh, property tax increase is truly justified. I really would like to see, especially after reviewing the budget, I really would like to see a good faith effort to better utilize current funds first, uh, and delay other expenses before increasing property taxes this much this year. Like I said, I would have been okay with a little bit, but it's, I don't, I don't see the numbers and the data supporting that. Um, something else, uh, three of the seven council members uh, at the hearing spoke very credibly and articulately about the budget analysis at that hearing. Um, just some feedback, several other members of the council made inaccurate statements during the course of the hearing, uh, came across as making light or dismissive of concerns, and overall kind of demonstrated a lack of sound and logical basis for the opinions. Um, they were oddly focused on the conditions of roads when it's a relatively small portion of the budget. And I have yet to see data supporting tires falling off people's cars, as was referenced during the hearing. Um, I do want to say a special thanks to Elvin Green, Kayleen Whitelock, and Pamela Brown for clearly stating how data informed your decisions. Um, and also for conveying a tone of seriousness. Also, everyone else for the time, I, I do appreciate hearing the dialogue. Um, while I don't have high hopes of swaying the council vote at this point to no, I do want to speak for myself and many other residents of West Jordan. I didn't feel represented, that we are disappointed with the direction this has gone. Um, we absolutely need more civic engagement. Maybe that's what needs to improve. Uh, we do plan to be paying more attention, uh, moving forward. And that was the, the strongest message they wanted to convey is regardless of what happens today, let's have more dialogue, but also uh, bad on us for not paying more attention. But based on the experience from the hearing, we do plan to pay more attention and engage with you moving forward. Uh, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else in the room who would like to address the council tonight on, on an item that is not a public hearing? All right, I'm not seeing any in the room. Is there any online with a hand raised, Mr. Anderson?
There are six individuals online, none of which have raised their hand.
Wonderful. We'll go ahead and call the public comment period closed, and we'll move to reports to the council. Uh, we'll start with the city council reports. This is our opportunity for the council to report what we've been up to, uh, as far as representing the people goes. Uh, Councilmember Whitelock.
Thank you. I just want to thank our economic development team for um, inviting us and, and the businesses. Um, we've been able to go to Nova, which is a, a data place, and SME Steel and Interstate Brick. We have some wonderful industry in our community and um, just wanted to uh, give a shout out for SME Steel. Um, they need, they need welders. They need people that want to do that profession. And so, um, and they're pretty good paying jobs. So sometimes we got caught up with that there's only one way to go, but there are many ways to um, earn a living and, and they could use some more employees that can weld for them. So, so just um, grateful that we have been able to go and interface with those businesses and um, happy to have them in our community.
Councilmember Green.
So uh, Mayor, I'm probably going to steal a little bit of your thunder. Uh, Saturday night, uh, Councilmember Shelton and I um, got the, the uh, privilege of being with the mayor and being at the demolition derby. Um, and you know, y- you know what's funny is when your, when your fourteen-month granddaughter is the one that likes the smashing of the cars better than the other, the grand boys. Uh, she was having a better ti- better time. But uh, it, it was a, it was a great night, lot of, lot of fun, a lot of twisted metal. Uh, the interesting thing, this is where I'll point out, uh, success of the city, um, is that, and, and we, I stopped and talked with a couple of our police officers and a couple of our police cadets. And if you didn't notice, when we, when you were leaving the uh, arena area, some of the traffic was being directed by the police cadets. Um, that helps alleviate some of the stress on some of our uniformed officers. That, to me, is a very successful part of the uh, of the, the police cadet program, is that they can help out in those kind of events and help alleviate the stress. So I thought that was fantastic. Um, I am actually looking forward, uh, as I was talking to Sergeant Hercules, who helps work with the cadets, looking forward to both the cadets and our the Youth Council that you just met with a, working on the Thanksgiving um, service project together. And that will, and I think that'll be a great thing. So uh, anyway, that's, that's what I had tonight. Thank you.
Councilmember Shelton.
So uh, I'd like to just do a little rundown of some things I've been involved in since our last meeting. Um, August fourteenth, I was able to attend uh, ribbon cutting grand opening uh, celebration for Liveaway Suites out in Jordan Landing. Um, and um, I happened to uh, be asked to be, to give a uh, a short welcome to West Jordan speech, which caught me off guard and I wasn't ready for, but uh, it was fun. Uh, I was uh, pleased to be uh, be able to represent the city there. Uh, on the fifteenth, we, uh, a few of us met, went out to the Nova Data Center tour, and it was really an amazing experience. It was kind of like stepping onto the set of a Star Trek movie or something. It was uh, very much a, almost a sci-fi experience, except it was, there was no fi, it was just sci. So, um, Code Enforcement, uh, I went on a ride along with them on the nineteenth, and uh, we went to my home, and I asked the code enforcement officer to uh, uh, cite me for any uh, infractions that I might have. And I did have a tree that was a little too low over the street and sidewalk. And so, uh, we just, just notified code enforcement today that we are now in compliance with our tree. Um, that was, that was an interesting experience. Uh, on the twentieth, uh, as Councilmember Whitelock already mentioned, uh, we were able to tour the SME Steel facility. And I'm very excited to see uh, how the city will be able to work with SME as they expand their operations in West Jordan City. Um, and that is their goal, to expand here in West Jordan. It's a very exciting news, and uh, I'm excited for that. Um, on the twenty-third, I just would like to express appreciation to uh, Council Director Anderson and his work for, in organizing and uh, and cooking delicious food for the council social. Uh, it was fun to enjoy some lighthearted conversation together. Um, and we were always sure to stay only in groups of two or three, uh, avoiding what would be considered a uh, uh, corum, uh, which is, is not, not good for us to do as council members. Um, the twenty-fourth, we had that demolition derby. Uh, and I was not aware about the uh, cadets directing traffic. That's, that's really great. So it was fun to meet them too. Um, uh, just yesterday on the twenty-sixth, I was able to do a, a ride along with uh, an animal services officer, uh, Dan Echol. And I learned that the city provides a number of pet services for residents uh, that I was not aware of, uh, including uh, end pets, uh, pets end of life services that are done very professionally. Um, and then I asked uh, Officer Echol, what was the largest animal he ever dealt with on his job? And he said it was a cow. So, uh, and, and they also deal with very small animals as well. And they're equipped to handle just about any situation that I could ever think of. So that was uh, very enjoyable as well. So uh, that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom.
This one's long overdue, but I want to thank um, our traffic engineer for their work on Seventy-Eighth and the prep that went into it, but even before the prep of getting the lines between Fifty-S sixth and, and Mountain View fixed. For the first time in several years, it finally makes sense. So thank you for that. But we have a lot of work on Seventy-Eighth right now, and I know it is something that residents have long hoped that was going to happen, and it's finally happening. And so I asked the residents for their patience for the next, the rest of the summer, next year, while we make that Seventy-Eighth much better. Um, and also a shout out to the cadets. My daughter always talks about it every day. She loves it so much. And I appreciate our police uh, for having the cadet program. Um, and it's been such a joy watching my daughter soar in that program. And then I had one more thing, and I can't remember now. Oh, um, to um, our young residents who spoke tonight, thank you for, for using your voice. I know it's scary, but scary things can often bring good things. So I will donate. And as someone with an autoimmune disorder and arthritis myself, thank you for speaking up.
Thank you. Any further comment from the council? Let's go to council office report then. Uh, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, council. And we have nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
What have you been doing? No, just kidding. Uh, let's go to the mayor's report. Mr. Burton.
Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you today. One of the open houses that we had since our last meeting was the open house for our city hall. There's a couple of pictures of that. We had fantastic attendance there. The weather was great, and we are now officially in here. We were official before, but now we're more official. It's kind of like having a soft opening and then the real opening. We are really open. On uh, Tuesday, August sixth, with National Night Out Against Crime, some of you joined us on going around and visiting with some of the neighborhood groups. And this is just a picture of one of the groups we had. Ariel is good at working with them and making sure they have the resources they need and the connections with the city to help make their neighborhoods better. So if you are living in a neighborhood that doesn't have a neighborhood watch, let us know, and Ariel will help you get that set up. We already talked about the Liveaway Suites ribbon cutting. Thank you, Councilmember Shelton, for filling in for me, even though you didn't know ahead of time. And then they Duncan Donut, oops, sorry, it's just Duncan. I keep calling it donuts. It used to be, they changed it to just Duncan. So Duncan is now also officially open. They did have their soft opening, and now they had their ribbon cutting and their official live opening. And they are here and happy to be here and doing very successful the last couple of weeks they've been here. And this morning, these two people came in to get passports. That is Santa Claus and Mrs. Claus. So just know that our passport offices are servicing Santa Claus and his wife. And he said that was his real name. However, on the document, it looks a bit different. Speaking of soft openings, we are doing an early rollout of the skate park unveiling. That will happen Saturday, August thirtieth, at noon. So we hope that you can join us there at noon. It's exciting, just, just the first phase. Maybe we can get Corbin to show off his talents on his skateboard. It's Friday. I thought it was Friday, but my paper says Saturday. So, okay, if you come Saturday, you'll be with a whole lot of people who already got that open. So come Friday, Friday at noon. Thank you for that. The city, every year, has a Get to the River event. And last year, we did a photo scavenger hunt, and it was very successful. Do, do that again this year. So starting on September first, through the month of September, if you go out there, there's little QR codes that you can get, and it makes a list, and your scavenger hunt is taking pictures of different items you find along the Jordan River Trail. And last year, one of the items was find a furry friend, and I happened to cross a deer and took a picture of a deer while I was on the Jordan River Trail. Anyway, so take your opportunity. You don't have to do it on the first. It goes through the entire month, and there are. It goes through the entire month and there are prizes for some people who do an excellent job. That's open to the entire public beyond West Jordan's boundaries. Our first Friday is continuing our concert series. So September sixth will be our next one. We hope to see you there. I can't tell you who it is, but I can tell you it'll be somebody from the state of Utah and they'll be good. I haven't found one that's not yet. And if you don't believe me, come and prove me wrong. Our food trucks continue. This September is the last month. And so come to there and on the second Tuesday is our market. And that'll be the last one of those for the year. So if you have not been, or if you have been, come again. That's at Ronwood Park. And speaking of passports, on Saturday, September twenty-first, we're gonna have an opportunity for anybody to come without an appointment to come get a passport. You may know that you authorized an additional passport employee. We have hired that additional passport ploy, employee. And so we're doing this and then starting on October first, we're gonna make it so people don't need an appointment to come, they can just come and get their passports. So thank you for making that possible. So we have that employee hired now. She is doing a good job, but she's still learning. But this will be an opportunity when we have this to come and do that. And you know, is, is she still here? Oh, she is. Our senior recorder of the year has been making all these things happen possible for us. So thank you. By the way, this is something that generates more revenue than it costs us to our city. So we're glad to be expanding that. Other things of note is the city offices will be closed on September seventh, second, on September second, Monday for Labor Day. So if that's the day you want to have the child, no, the wrong kind of labor. So if you are working, take that day off and enjoy your time off. City offices will be closed. That is my report.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. Uh, city administration report. Let's go to Mr. Lee.
Thank you. I have a couple of department heads I'd like to give you, give you an update on a few things. The mayor mentioned, uh, passport offices. I'd like Denise to give you a little more, uh, information on what's happening in our passport center. And, uh, Brian Clegg, our Public Works Director, to give you an update on some, uh, city construction projects. And then after that, Corey Frelick, our Public Services Director, to give you an update on Ronwood Park and that area. And Greg, our Public Utilities Director, to give an update on the sewer, uh, project on New Bingham Highway, or Copper Hills Parkway, excuse me.
I hope you guys kept track of that order.
Let's go Denise, then Brian.
Denise and Brian and Greg and Corey. And then Scott and Duncan, just because they're here. Just kidding.
So a few things that we're doing in the passport office. We have expanded our services to include concealed weapon permit, um, and other passport photos for other countries. We are also, um, hired our part-time passport agent so that we'll be able to take walk-in appointments very soon. We'll also be posting that on, um, the state, the Department of State webpage as well. We'll be one of the only ones that, um, performs those services. So we're super excited to add that additional service level to our passport office.
Do you want to mention money orders?
And money orders. Sorry. Thank you, Mayor. I was like, I can't remember all this stuff. Tangi is amazing at thinking of creative ways to expand services in customer service and passports in positive ways so that our, our residents and other people who come to our city have positive, positive engagement with government. And I'm super excited when she comes to us with new ideas. One of the things that was a challenge was that, um, often you would need a money order, which I think we told, we talked about a couple of meetings ago and, um, to, um, send in with your passport. And, um, Tangi got a money order machine. It's active and working now. And she's selling money orders, um, right out of the passport office. So again, an increased level of service, um, in the passport office. And she continues to try and expand our hours so that we can provide more services when people are able to come without having to miss work or school. So there's several things that she's done to, um, really engage the community as a whole. And we received lots of five-star Google reviews. So super happy about that. We also provide bilingual services on a regular basis. So no one goes unserved. Thank you.
What's a money order? Never mind.
Thanks, council chair and council. Just a few updates on all the construction going on in the city. Uh, I'll start with the good news first. Thirteen Hundred West is open from Ninety-Fourth to Seventy-Eighth. Dominion or Inbridge is, uh, complete there. Got one more section to do between Seventy-Eighth and Seventieth, and then they'll be out of our city. And going to the, to the north.
Hey, Brian, can you get Greg to finish up the rest of Seventy-Eighth faster?
I've been trying. Councilmember Green. Next, Seventy Under South is, uh, Councilmember Bloom mentioned. That, uh, project is finally underway. Um, the intent, uh, it's a hundred and ninety-day build, so they'll finish in the spring, um, after winter. The intent is right now is to get the road widened out, put, uh, temp asphalt down and, uh, have it ready to go for, uh, winter time. And then they'll come back in the spring and do a permanent asphalt. Lastly, uh, Sixty-Two Hundred South overlay is underway. That goes from Fifty-Six Hundred West to, uh, Bangor Highway, both sides of the road. Concrete work is, is nearing completion and then the mill and overlay will start shortly. And that will be complete around the end of October. Hopefully, if, as long as the weather holds out and the temperatures hold out. So that's our goal. Any questions?
Questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. I guess, uh, Mr. Davenport's turn. You, you can take your time. No, we're not in any hurry. All right.
Uh, just a quick update on the New Bingham Highway Sewer Project. The good news is they are almost done. They have about four hundred feet left and about six or seven side connections to make. The, uh, project time should end around September eleventh. So they about, they have about three weeks left. As they get closer to the intersection of Grizzly Way and New Bingham Highway, they will begin to work at night. And I think they have about three days of night work. That way that their traffic control will not go into the intersections during school hours. So the school won't be interrupted by their work. We have gone and talked with the principal, uh, about the work they're doing now. And they don't have any complaints with what's going on. Do you have any questions on that project?
Any questions for the stinky project on New Bingham? That was a pun. All right. Thanks, Greg. And Corey.
Now for the fun stuff. We got a lot of exciting things going on. Sorry, sorry, Greg and Brian. But a lot of exciting things going on at Ronwood. First with Will's Park, as Mayor mentioned, we've decided, uh, this Friday to do a soft opening. And to update you on part of the reasoning is the why and what's going on out there currently. So the skate park, the concrete skate park itself has been finished. The crews out there are, have finished the asphalt to the parking lot, asphalt for all of the pump tracks, the small pump track, the large pump track. But we've noticed with the skate park being finished, there's been a lot of interest from the community residents. We've had a hard time keeping people out of it. So we decided to just do a soft opening this Friday. And then starting next week, uh, the contractor will begin moving the large dump beds that we received from, uh, Rio Tinto up there. They'll put those in place with the crane. We'll then begin work on one of the dump beds having a concrete skateboard installed inside of that. But in the meantime, we'll be working with the contractor to secure the skate park portion. So it'll be safe, uh, for residents to still skate in that area while the construction's still going on. Our goal is then to have a grand opening early October for the entire park. That's where we'll be hoping to, well, not hoping, we will be holding a large grand opening. So a lot of exciting stuff going on there. They're finishing up today, the asphalt for the, a lot of the trails around the, the skate park portion so that it'll be safe to enter from parking lots and from all angles of the park, uh, while the skate park's open. Um, and then we're also working on the Ronwood Master Plan. That currently is in, uh, kind of the last few stages, some of the design. Our biggest hurdle right now, what we're working on to finish, is the water. We're gonna get water. We've got a few options. We're working, uh, with, with our economic development team as well as, uh, Greg and Public Utilities to, to come up with one of the best options. Uh, and then our hope is that go out late September, early October for, uh, to go out to bid for construction of the fields. So, and that's, that's update for Ronwood. Any questions?
A quick question. Did you, is that, uh, Friday or Saturday for the soft opening?
Friday, this Friday at noon. Sorry.
Oh, so it is Friday at noon.
Yeah, this Friday.
I saw the noon and thought that that had to be Saturday. So I just wanted to double check.
Yeah, yeah, we did. They, they, there's a, I think there's more interest from the adult community than the kids community, to be honest with you. We've got a lot of adult, uh, groups that are getting in there early in the morning. So.
Wonderful. Wonderful. So it's Friday. That's the day after Thursday. Right. Yeah.
To, to be clear, it's not an event. It's just, we're opening up the fences.
We're just open.
Allowing people to use it. It's the grand opening, the event, the ribbon cutting will be early October.
Good to know. Good to know. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I keep thinking it's almost done at the skate park. And then I remembered the trucks are a feature, not, not, not a temporary thing.
Just one last thing from me. At one point, we had a tentative, hold the date for, uh, a week from tomorrow to take a tour of terrain formerly known as Wood Ranch. Due to conflicts with the legal cities and towns, we're gonna look for a new date. So you can take that, hold the date off of your calendar. We'll look for a date later in September or possibly early October. Or if that's it for me.
Perfect. And then we have one more report for the council. And this will be from the West Jordan Historical Society. Also known as the museum, guys, guy, Mr. Dally.
Good evening. Um, you should all have a copy of our report in your packet. It shows our finances for this last year. We've posted our hours at the museum. We, um, have also announced that we're going to be doing our, bringing back our Halloween activity this year. October nineteenth, we'll be doing our pumpkin walk again now that COVID's over and we've trans, transitioned some things. We'll be help welcoming the public to come to the museum on that day as we normally do. We've been working on volunteer recruitment. We've posted on Just Serve, the LGS Church's website for volunteer activities. And we've actually had two service projects, um, come because of that. We had one this last weekend and we have one tomorrow with the American Preparatory Academy. Where we'll have, uh, kids onsite to help just do some yard cleanup and some interior maintenance. Also, big on our property improvements this year. We've replaced several of our windows that were aging and broken. And we've replaced our front gates as we continue to improve and make the property more inviting.
Is that all? That's all? Questions, uh, Councilmember Lamb?
No questions. Just a comment. I wanted to say thank you for bringing back the Halloween pumpkin. Is it a pumpkin walk?
Pumpkin walk, yes.
So I just know that, uh, when I was on the council, uh, previously, that, uh, before COVID, that was a fun event and a lot of people showed up and you guys did a great job. So excited to see that come back.
We're hoping for as good of a turnout as we've had in the past.
So let, 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 uh, Mayor and, uh, his group know that, you know, communications, we can help out when that comes up as well.
Absolutely.
What day is that?
It's October nineteenth. Which is a Saturday from one to four. Bring your families, come in costume. There's a small admission charge that is a donation to the museum. And then you get to take a pumpkin home with you as part of the event.
See, when you said pumpkin, I was really hoping for toss being the verb and not walk, but you know, whatever.
You can toss it afterwards.
Or, or catapult launch, maybe. All right. Any other questions for, um, Historical Society?
Now, as you get, um, hopefully, as you get more volunteers, do you plan on opening during the winter hours?
That'll be to determine. That's more of a personal safety issue because right now, most of our volunteers are in their seventies and eighties. So it'll be a cooperative effort to make sure we've got safe snow access because we don't, our driveways are all gravel. So trying to do snow removal on loose gravel is very difficult. That's why we close normally during the winter months.
I mean, we had a really mild winter last year and it just, I, I, I'm concerned that it's being closed during, when school is open. And I would like to see more school and, and involvement and getting kids there and getting them community involved. And I, I just really struggle with how long it's closed when we have such mild winters lately. That's, that's my concern.
And that's understandable. I share the same concern. My, my primary concern obviously is the safe access to the property. And if it were asphalt or concrete, I would feel a lot different about it than we do right now with having just gravel because it's near impossible to run a snow blower over any of that to have it be safe.
Yeah, no, completely understandable. I just want to make sure that if there's a chance that we can work more with the schools and the community during that time, I would really like to see that.
Absolutely. And we do open by appointment as needed. If we have a school or community group that reaches out, we've had several come during the summer during our non-traditional hours.
Wonderful. I guess if the driveway was brand-new concrete, it wouldn't be historical quite as.
Yep.
Just, just kidding. Okay. Any, uh, any other questions or comments for the Historical Society? Thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Thank you for having us.
Yep. All right. We're moving on to the next item on the agenda is our first public hearing of the evening. We have six of them. This is for ordinance twenty-four dash twelve. This is a petition from Ross Dinsdale Ivory Development requesting an amendment to the Dry Creek Highlands Sub Area One Development Plan encompassing eighty-nine acres at sixty-four hundred west and ninety is south approximately. Mending a single provision in the master development agreement. And we'd like the applicant to come on up and present. That'll be Mr. Dinsdale.
Yeah, I'm Ross Dinsdale. It's nice to meet you guys. Glad I can be here. I work for Ivory Homes. And, um, prior to working for Ivory Homes, I worked for Lehigh City where I live for about ten years. I'm an engineer and so I appreciate, uh, Councilwoman Bloom's shout out to engineers because usually we only get credit when something doesn't work. So it's nice to get a, you know, hear some appreciation every once in a while. But the, the reason I mention that is I, I have a good appreciation for the work that you guys do. You know, I, I really, um, enjoyed my time at Lehigh City and, and understand, yeah, all of the effort that you guys put in. So grateful I can be here. Our request tonight, it has, uh, two parts. One is the approval of our Sub Area One Development Plan. And, um, the, the reason to bring it back to you guys, it was previously approved. We submitted our second preliminary plan and, um, had some feedback from staff that we needed to make some updates. A few of those were, uh, concerns with public utility and private roads. We had a lot of private roads and, um, you know, with rearload townhomes or cottages and other things like that. So, uh, we went back and redid some of the layout to, um, make the majority of the roads within this first sub-area public streets. We do have, uh, pod of townhomes and those will be mainly fronting onto public streets. So the plan, um, in your packet reflects some of those changes that we've made to the Sub Area One Plan. And then the second part to the plan is the request. The current development agreement has two triggers for our two main amenities. And the first one is that a pool be built at, uh, the two-hundredth certificate of occupancy and then the clubhouse be built at the four-hundredth certificate of occupancy. We've started the design on the pool and the clubhouse. And we've, we've found that really we need to build them at the same time. It's gonna be just a much better layout and plan. If we can build the pool and the clubhouse together, all the pool equipment can go in the basement of the clubhouse and, and they can be designed together. So in talking to staff, you know, we asked and, um, you know, they thought it was a good idea if we could move back the trigger for the pool to three hundred units, but then move up that trigger for the clubhouse from four hundred to three hundred. So, uh, you know, we wouldn't be really delaying anything, just kinda moving them to one point. That'll give us the time. But we could get the pool built by the two-hundredth unit, but it would be really hard to get the clubhouse built by that point. So that's the request is that we can change that trigger to three hundred units and then, um, the amended Sub Area One Plan. And I'm happy to answer any questions you guys might have. I know Mark, um, has more info and, um, uh, staff's been very helpful throughout this process. So I've really appreciated their, their time.
Wonderful. Thank you for that. I have one quick question and then we'll go to Councilmember Green. What, where are you currently on number of occupancy, number of occupancy certificates granted? And how far out is the two-hundredth versus the three-hundredth?
Yeah.
Approximately. Obviously, crystal balls are broken, but
Right, yeah. So currently, we're about 30 homes occupied, and those are mostly in our Phase 1A. And then we are under construction. You know, if you go out there today, you'll see that we're under construction on a handful more homes in Phase 1B and 1C. We would like to be building about 100 homes a year out there. So, you know, if you can imagine, it's, it's getting closer to the end of the year, so we won't be bringing on any new lots until, you know, the middle to end of next year. So, so if I had to use my crystal ball, 200 lots may be getting towards the end of 2025, middle of 2026. Prior to that, in, in the meantime, and currently, the other two things we're working on is we're having our plans reviewed for 86 south by the city currently. And our, our plan is to get that constructed, and then what is 6,700 west at Dead Ends, just north of us. And, and then the next step is we will build that down from, from where it ends currently down to 90th south. That, having that done will give us the frontage for our clubhouse area. So in addition to the homes that are, would trigger it, there's also some infrastructure that we need to build to, to get to that point, to have that ready to go.
Okay, so if, if all goes well, just restating what I think I heard, is if everything went according to the current plan and everything was kosher, the 200th unit would be built in about a year and a half, two years, and then the pool would open sometime around that time, and then another, but what we're going to do is put it back a year beyond that
Right.
Approximately.
Yep.
Okay. Keeping in mind that pools are only open for four-ish months out of the year, it doesn't seem like a big ask to delay it for a season is basically what you're asking, right? Taking it from opening in the 2026 season to the 2027 season or something like that.
Yeah, and, and, you know, our hope is that it just provides a better service to the community, to people using it, having both the clubhouse and the pool available.
Understood. Thank you. Councilmember Green?
So I've got a couple of questions, and a couple, and part of this may be better answered by staff. So, so on the, on the current sub-area plan, the amenity acreage went from 13 to 11.6. Do we have any idea where that 1.6 acres is going to go as the groomed acreage, or is it just going to be incorporated into a future area plan?
I guess I'll take this one. So when Jones Ranch was first created and adopted, the, the general idea was to kind of allow, allow it as a planned community that provides some flexibility within some minimum open space and some maximum units. So in between, there's, there's allowance for some flexibility there. So you're right, that amenity is shrinking down to 11.6 acres. So the remaining, the remaining 1.4 acres will need to be added to additional park space built in the future. So that'll most likely be, there's a couple of parks on the west side of U111 planned, and as part of that development. They'll have to expand those in order to make up that difference. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're not, that everybody's clear that the MDA still has the 23-point-whatever acres of
Correct.
And we're not changing that.
Yes, and that will have to be
The other question that I have is regarding the passive open, open space along Barney's Creek. That was originally planned in the sub-area plan that we're now, that we're asked to be modifying. The staff report says that it, there should be a condition of approval. We don't do conditions of approval. So my question is, why didn't we put, if, if we think that the, that, that passive area space should have been, should be put into Phase 2 in the second one and not put in now, why aren't we putting that into the MDA so that we can make sure that that passive space is put in and not postponed any longer? Because staff had the recommendation that it'd be put in next.
Yeah, so just to speak to that, I, I think what you're referring to is, I think there was just an oversight in that, that staff report. I think we were originally looking at doing something like that of a condition of approval, but then, like you said, you're absolutely right. We don't really do conditions of approval with development plans. And so we felt that it could, since it would have to go to the sub-area 2, would have to go through the council anyway, we would include it at that time rather than in this one.
Well, I, 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 well, I guess what I'm asking is, we're, we're postponing it. What guarantee do we have that it's going to be put into, into Phase 2 and not Phase, that, you know, a, a later phase? That's, that's, that's where I'm going.
So that requirement is part of the passive open space requirements of the, the MDA, the master development agreement and the development plan. So that's part of the contract that Ivory has with the city, so they, they're contractually obligated to provide that amenity. So with sub-area 2, we would just, again, make sure that
But, but there's no deadline on that contract, is there?
Not specifically, no.
And that's, that, that's why I'm wondering, that the staff report says we ought to do it sooner than later, and that's why I'm asking, how do we do that? So, just, just asking.
I, I can give you an update. I, I meet with my engineer about Dry Creek every Tuesday morning, and so we actually met this morning. We will be submitting soon to you guys our sub-area 2, and it does include all of Barney's Creek from 6,400 west to U111.
Okay.
And, and that was my request to these guys to put it into sub-area 2. And part of the thinking behind that is, we actually, we started a process with the Army Corps of Engineers and then the state. We need a stream alteration permit, and, and we have a separate engineering company working on the floodplain. We have to remap the floodplain through that area. So it's just, it's, it's got a lot of work specific to the channel itself that needs to be done. And we've started that. But including it with sub-area 2 gives us a little bit more time to finalize that work. But it will be coming to you guys very soon.
It makes sense. I just want to make sure it's sooner than not later. You know where I'm going?
It will be with sub-area 2.
Okay. And then the last question that I had was, there's actually, because of the way that the road worked and the lots and everything, the number of units are going to go down from 408 to 404, if I remember the numbers right. And we're going to increase the low-density houses by nine, the medium-down-density houses by 20. The high-density ones were reduced by about 34 or 36. I don't remember the exact number. Are those going, are, are you eliminating some of those high-density, or are you just going to shift them into another village?
Yeah, they would be, we wouldn't exceed our overall number. Yeah, we would likely shift them into another village.
Okay. All right. That's what I needed to know. Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Chair. My only ask is that with the change with the 200 to 300, is that you are able to communicate that to the people that live there currently? And that, that will happen. And then as people start buying that, they'll know as well. I mean, if, if they come back to the city and ask me, I'm going to say, well, go ask, they're the ones doing it. But yeah, if you could just make sure that communication is put out there to those residents who are maybe expecting a pool sooner.
Yeah, that's, we will absolutely do that.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Forsyth. Did you have anything you wanted to add to the presentation?
Yeah, since I'm here, I can just finish my presentation. So I just wanted to add just a couple of things, and I'll try to be brief here, but just to kind of clear some things up with the density. So, so like we said, we're expecting changing from a total of 408 to 404 units. So this is four units less than what was originally adopted. And just to kind of put that in context, this will be about 13, 13, 14% of the overall Jones Ranch units that were approved. So this will be a mix of single-family and townhomes. About a third of those will be townhomes. A third will be single-family, small lots that are about roughly 4,000 square feet apiece. And the remaining third will be some of the medium to larger single-family lots, which is 7,000 to 10,000 square foot. But the, so the total density for this area is going to be 4.5 dwelling units per acre. That's just for sub-area 1, which is under the five dwelling units per acre that was required as part of the Jones Ranch master plan. Then the amenities and open space. So just to kind of clarify some things there, the Jones Ranch master plan requires a minimum of 17% of that total area for all of Jones Ranch to be in open space. So that's about 100 acres. And so that's broken up into three different categories. So the first one consists of groomed park space. That's about 21 total acres. Then the additional open space, or this is kind of more like the interior landscaping you see between townhomes and pedestrian pathways, there has to be a minimum of 14 acres. And then the remaining open space, which is about 79 acres, well, it's 79 acres, but you subtract for the acreage of slopes that are over 30%. So you get about 65 acres. That's going to be in Barney's Creek. So that'll run from 64th all the way to the Ocker Mountains. So just to kind of put this in context, again, going back to that, those differences between the proposed Club Ivory amenity and what was originally approved, that going from 13 acres to 11.6, again, they'll need to make up that difference of 1.4 acres somewhere else in, in future parks. And then just going over some notable changes, we touched a little bit on this. And I'm not sure why this isn't working. It was working when I tried it, but yeah, we talked about the Barney's Creek wash. That'll be deferred to sub-area 2. And then also Albright Peak Drive, which you can kind of see there. It's, it's not the Collector Road, but it's the one east of that.
Did you want to use the annotator? Is that what you were looking for?
Yeah, well, it's, let's see.
You can, you can doodle on the screen now. There we go. You could draw out football plays, you know, watch the halfback as he comes around the end.
Anyway, just that road that's circled there, that's Albright Peak Drive. Right now, it's just a stub road. So that's another thing that's going to be deferred to sub-area 2. So that road will continue across the wash there when sub-area 2 comes in. So, and that's all I had. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
My clear button's not working. Any questions for staff before we go to the public hearing? Councilmember Shelton?
One question on the, the roads on the last screen that we were looking at that go across Barney's Creek. Are, are those just going to be like piped culvert type of road, or is it going to be a bridge? How are they going to be constructed?
Yeah, so from what we've seen previously, I believe it's going to be a bridge road. I don't know if that'll change or not, but yeah, we'll see. The idea is to continue the, the public utilities.
And that, if it's a bridge, that would enable people to still use Barney's Creek as a pseudo-trail? Is that the idea?
I think so. Yeah, one of two things could happen. One would be the same plan that was approved in the original sub-area where you had, the trail would actually go under the bridge itself, and then it would have ramps up to a crossing across the street. Or we could see just, just the ramps themselves with no under-the-bridge access.
Okay, thank you.
Is there actually water in that creek?
It's pretty much, it's a dry wash for the most part. It's maybe in a 100-year flood event, you might get some water, but
After heavy thunderstorms, it gets, it gets, it flows a little bit, but it doesn't flow for very long. It flows for like a day after heavy thunderstorms. Okay, Councilmember Bedore?
This is just an observation as we look at writing these things up and how we do things. And I understand why they're done, but it always just irks me when I read these. And it's a sentence that says things like, "Between 5% and 10% of the overall Jones Ranch community will consist of affordable housing." Tells me 90% of your area is unaffordable housing. I just, I think that we need to be looking at that. When we're writing that out, it's unclear many of, how many of the residential units in sub-area 1 will be affordable. That's a world we live in right now. We need to be taking that into account and understanding what we're doing and what we're writing for people to look at. We're telling them 90% of this area is unaffordable. So I'm just pointing that out as something we may want to look at word restructuring and things, because those is, sitting on the council now, those things just irk me and make me like you less. I know it's not your fault, but I'm just saying that it's, it's a phrase that shows us where we are in this world right now, and we may want to look at it.
Thank you, Councilmember Whitelock.
I agree with Councilmember Bedore, but I think what's important to understand is I believe our affordable housing is there to go with the legislators, legislation that says you will have this much affordable housing, and we're using their definition. And I think that's why it was put in there that way, is because it had to do with our, we had, Larry knows this very well, but we have to have a, a, a plan that we submit, and in there, there's a definition of what affordable housing is. And that's up for debate if that's really affordable. But I think, I think, maybe to help Mark out a little bit, I think that's why it's there. But I agree. It's, yeah.
I will just say, I said that more for the ears that might be listening than the people in the room.
The official term of art is moderate income housing, and it does have specific parameters for how that's calculated, something like 80% of the average gross family income, something like that. As Councilmember Whitelock mentioned, Larry Gardner knows the exact numbers. But what was specifically written into the Jones Ranch, now Dry Creek Highlands master plan was a minimum of 5%, which is actually over and above what's required by state law. So it's pretty much just a reminder of what was factored into the development agreement. And that 5% minimum ends up being 148 units, so.
All right. Councilmember Green, we still have the public hearing coming up, by the way, guys. We're not debating this yet.
One last question. So, and maybe, may, may, Mark, maybe you can answer it, or maybe I'm answering it myself. But by the time, so let me, so this will have 404 units in it. The, the, the community center, the clubhouse, whatever the heck it's called, and the pool, they'll be done at 300. So the majority of this sub-area plan will be done by the time the, at least three quarters, that's a good batting average in, in, in most major leagues. That'll be done by the, is, is that the way I'm seeing that? I see a head, okay. Cool. All right. Thank you.
All right, let's go ahead and open this up for the public. If there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to this, this is our public hearing. Again, you have three minutes. We ask this, in public hearings, you can find your remarks to this specific topic. You'll have three minutes. If you're online, raise your hand. If you're in the room, come slowly, slower, slowly to the micro, just kidding. Come to the microphone, and we'll give you three minutes. Give us your name.
All right. Good evening, Council. My name is Chris McConaughey. I am a West Jordan resident, and as of Friday, a resident of this subdivision. That said, I've had plenty of time during the construction process to get to know the neighbors, and I've spoken with quite a few of them. I am speaking for some of them, but I don't think I'll need the extra time. So there are about 18 folks that are in, living in the neighborhood now, and for the most part, the most part, uh, people are okay with what's been proposed. Unanimously, everybody says the sooner the better. However, there's also recognition that what's currently in that, uh, in that agreement really doesn't make sense. The pool without the clubhouse, clubhouse without the pool, it would make more sense to have them done together and be able to use a whole amenity at once. The other thing is if you consider the building of 100 units a year, that has to be finished by number 300, and it's probably going to take them about a year or so to build what's out there. They've, they've got to start this probably next year anyway, so it's not much of a wait for the residents on top of what it would already be. Uh, there's still a lot of roadwork that's got to be done, and this agreement does still continue to push Ivory to be quick in developing the infrastructure. Um, there was, of the folks that I spoke to in the neighborhood, there was only one that was in opposition to that. Um, I think it might've been because he was having a bad day and would have been opposed to anything anyway, including what's already in the agreement. Um, I want to speak also briefly to the Barney's Creek Trail. Thank you, Councilmember Green, for bringing that up. Um, no objection with that being in the second phase. One of the things that had been discussed with Ivory previously and a little bit with, uh, Mr. Davenport with the city, is the ability to potentially pipe that portion of the trail and then still have a swell above to handle excess water. If we delay it a little bit, then there's more opportunity to discuss that, so it's a nicer trail overall. If it has to be done sooner, it's just going to be left open, uh, native vegetation and not that pretty. It's a very steep drop off that's eroded. It'd be nice to give that a little bit more time for the engineers to work back and forth. The, I can't remember how much was mentioned here, but there are obviously some dependencies with the Army Corps of Engineers and the stormwater plan, what has to happen west if you want 11. Ultimately, the neighbors would like to see things done right. That one's going to be directly behind my home, and with five little boys on the autism spectrum, we very much want to make sure that we take our time and do things right. If it's pushed from one to two, that's okay. Uh, last thing I want to call out is, uh, the Planning Commission's recommendation. Uh, I was able to listen to their comments, but not speak during the public hearing there. One expressed appreciation for Commissioner, uh, John Roberts, who specifically asked the impact it would have on residents and was very, very careful to ask about that, um, and being thoughtful of those who weren't there in the room. So thank you to the Planning Commission as well. Thank you, Council. Very much appreciate your time and consideration, and especially those who...
Oh, you almost, you almost got it in. All right, anybody else, uh, who'd like to speak to this issue? I don't see any in the room. Is there anybody online?
There are two individuals online, neither of whom have raised their hand.
Perfect. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring this back to the council for discussion and motions and stuff. Councilmember Green, you're first.
I just got a couple of, uh, uh, comments. Um, you've heard my questions, I think they've been adequately answered, and so I think I'm good with that. Uh, there's a couple of notes that I would, uh, would like to, um, express. Um, one, I, I really do appreciate, um, Ivory connecting that trail to the elementary school, um, coming back behind those and connecting the, the trail to the elementary school. I, I really like that. And two, y- y- you hit a big point in my heart, is when the sub area plan says traffic calming measures will be built into the, into the, uh, subdivision plat and the preliminary plan, there's a bonus point for me, because that solves a lot of our problems in the future by having traffic calming measures built into the neighborhood. So thank you.
Councilmember Shelton?
Chair, could we, uh, bring Mr. Forsyth back up to?
Absolutely.
Answer a question?
Yeah, question for staff, sure.
Uh, Mr. McConaughey mentioned something during his comment about the, uh, 300 versus 200, and that the clubhouse and pool needed to be complete by 300 units, and as I understood it, it needed to begin construction at 300 units. Uh, could you address that?
Yeah, I believe the wording is that they need to start construction.
Okay, that, that is, unless I misunderstood him, he has a perception it needs to be completed by 300 units?
Yeah, the, the original language was pretty much the same, is that, um, when you had the, the 200 and the 400, uh, unit triggers, uh, it was just the 200 would, they would have to start construction on the swimming pool, and then at 400, they would have to start construction on the clubhouse. Uh, the proposed language, they would have to start construction on both.
Okay, well, um, I would just then echo the Planning Commissioner who said, "Let's make sure to communicate and, and, uh, talk with residents so that they fully understand when that will happen." Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Shelton. I appreciate, is there, there's further discussion? So I'll go to Councilmember Bloom, then I'll bring it up.
Oh no, if there wasn't any discussion, I was gonna move.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to point something out, though, in the, in the staff report, it actually says that the sentence being deleted says, "The master developer shall construct and substantially complete the construction of the private pool by the 200th certificate and the clubhouse by the 400th certificate." Um, so that says construct and substantially complete by the time those are issued. The new sentence, however, says commence construction and doesn't say substantially complete by the 300th. That's a, it's a, it's a tiny little, uh, wordsmithing, but it is substantial, um, obviously, because that's the word, substantial. Substantially complete by the 200 and 400th, or just start by the 300th. That's, that's, um, it's, it's different. I just wanted to know if anybody wants to address that. Go ahead.
That is a correct statement of the change in the wording, what you just described, so.
Yeah.
It, it has changed in the, in the language.
Okay, so that, that was intentional? I, I don't know if it was intentional or not, but it is there. So I just wanted to point that out. I'm not sure I'm super happy with that little change. I mean, it's not, I, I would say it's not a substantial change, but that's the exact word that it is. So I think it is kind of a substantial change. Uh, my question, I guess for the developer or staff would be, what if we threw that substantial completion back in there with the 300th certificate? Uh, go ahead and come on up. Since I asked you a direct question, we'll let you answer.
Um, I, I don't know that it was intentional, but the, uh, so we have a schedule and a plan put together, and, um, the 300th certificate of occupancy beginning construction, you know, that's when it is feasible based on, you know, what I mentioned to you guys of us finishing 86 South, uh, finishing Jones Ranch Drive. Uh, you know, we need to extend utilities up Jones Ranch Drive to get to this site. So I guess, you know, and then apart from that, we'll be constructing homes. Um, so, yeah, I, I would like to have it the way it is currently worded, um, but I don't know that it was trying to, you know, sneak anything around you guys.
Appreciate that, thank you. Uh, Councilmember Bedore?
So then the question is, did we just go from having substantially completed pool by 200 to probably having a pool completed by 400 now? Is that what we've moved to?
Well, um, I guess I'll have to say I'm, I'm coming into this a little newer. I'm not, uh, you know, 100% familiar with how it was worded, but I did have a discussion with Mark, the way it is currently worded in the approved master development agreement, I said, "Is that a certificate of occupancy?" To me, it wasn't 100% clear, and so in my mind, I was thinking that the trigger was the certificate of occupancy, we would begin the pool or the clubhouse. And so, um, you know, this is an attempt to match that, but, um, yeah, so you'll just have to forgive my ignorance on that a little bit, sorry.
No problem. Councilmember Lamb?
I just want to point out, this isn't just an Ivory thing, but in most developments like this, you usually have a trigger to start something, and I know that you saw, you said the wording said something, but in order to cover the costs, you have to have so many homes in an HOA to cover the costs of construction and maintain, maintenance. And so I don't, I don't believe it was anything intentional as far as 200 versus 300, but the way I see it is, once we get that 300, then we can have enough people that we can start building this and have the costs from the HOA to do the maintenance. So I, I don't believe there's anything intentional or, or bad about, you know, 200 versus 300, so I'm okay with it.
Yeah, and I just, just wanted to clarify, I don't know, I don't know if it's intentional, unintentional, whatever, but it does change materially what we're being asked here, whether we, because, because you're right, I mean, you need so many units to build something, but it was so many units to build and complete, and now it's just so many units to start, commence is the word in here. Um, I would be a lot more comfortable if the language was, if the only thing we were changing was the number, and we're compromising on this middle number, and that's the only change, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. And this isn't the kind of thing I normally lose sleep over, but this is, this is material to the, to the discussion. Um, I'd be more comfortable if it, if it was truly, because that's the compromise, right? I mean, the, the city guy in me just wants to say, "Sorry, you said you'd start by 200, start by 200. If you got to build a clubhouse too, well, that's 200's before 400, so build them both at 200," right? I mean, there's nothing in the development agreement as it sits to say you can't build them both at 200. You, you could, because it's, 200 is before 400. Um, that said, I'm, I'm willing to compromise on the 300, right? We got 200 on the one, we got 400 on the other, let's meet in the middle at 300. I'm, I'm willing to do that. But meeting at 330 or 350 or 360, which is what we're, in actuality, we're, we're changing from 200 to substantially complete to 300 and plus X, however long it takes you, right? Um, is now, we're not meeting in the middle anymore, we're meeting on the side of the middle somewhere at some undetermined point that we don't know. Um, so we don't know if, if 300 occupants will be able to take advantage of this at the 300th occupant, or if it will be the 350th or 400th occupant by the time it gets built, right? If you're building 100 units a year, and it takes 100, it takes a year to build a clubhouse and a pool, we're right back to 400. And you could've just said, "We want the 400 number," and nobody would've entertained that, um, probably, right? That, that's not a compromise anymore. So I would be a lot more comfortable if the new sentence just inserted and substantially complete, just like the old sentence did, um, after the word commence. I, I'd be a lot more comfortable with that. Councilmember Whitelock?
And as Councilmember Shelton pointed out, I think that, uh, Mr. McConaughey was under the impression, when he testified, I think he was testifying saying, "We're okay if it's done at 300." So, so I, I'm equally concerned.
Councilmember Shelton?
Uh, just to echo, uh, Councilmember Whitelock, um, my concern is not that it would be, not when it's being built, but rather what the residents expect and hope for and, and, uh, the impact it's going to have on them based on their current understanding, uh, it seems like it's, it's different from what they're hoping for.
So I guess my question would be, I'm willing to insert that from the dais in the motion and just doing that, um, how would you, how, how big of a monkey wrench would that throw into the plan? I mean, what, so for me, you can just tell me if I'm right or wrong. Um, for me, what, what that would, the effect that it would seem to have on the development would be, you can't issue that 300th certificate of occupancy, despite how many homes are built and ready to go, you can't issue that occupancy until that pool and clubhouse are now substantially completed. Um, so you might have 300 homes ready to go, and the last 50 of them are just going to sit empty until that pool house, pool and clubhouse are ready to go. That's, that's kind of what it seems to me, like, would be the practical effect of that, is that approximately?
Yeah, it would be, you know, like Councilmember Lamb mentioned, that it would be really difficult to, to meet that. Um, like I mentioned, we're, so, you know, um, we're working on the design for 86 South, and there's a deadline to have that, um, complete by the end of 2025. Um, you know, we're under construction on 90 South now, and, uh, construction's gone really well on that, and it'll, you know, take about a, a full year to complete that. 86 South is, um, uh, 66 foot right away, and so it's about, you know, three fourths the size of 90 South, so the construction shouldn't take as long, but it will take, um, the majority of next year to build. Uh, and, and once we get the intersection at 6,700 West and 8,600 South done, we could start construction on Jones Ranch Road, uh, you know, which will be a similar timeline, probably another year's worth of construction. Um, if we start halfway through the year, then we lose some time during the winter time. I, I guess what I'm getting at is to get to the point where we can even start on the site for the clubhouse, we're a couple of years out, even if we, you know, have our construction crews going, um, nonstop from now. So what it would mean is that we would get to a point where we're not likely to build homes if we don't, you know, have any ability to use them or sell them. So we would get to a point where we have a lot of construction that we need to do, and now the development stops, and, you know, we're not, um, generating any of the money that can go towards that clubhouse, so. Um, and, and like I said, the, the way I read it currently is, you know, it's, it's not clear cut. I think it could be construed to be at the certificate of occupancy, the 200th certificate of occupancy to commence, but that's not clear, and, and so what the desire with this was to clarify that.
Well, i- i- if it's not clear, what I'm asking for is for it to be equally not clear, then. I want the same language that we had before. Now, if, if the, the road construction schedule is interesting to me, but not really material to this, I, I get that it's material to the actual logistics of how, how you have to get from point A to point B. But for me, the question was, can we build a pool at 200 certificates of occupancy? That was the requirement under the current MDA, the pools built and substantially complete at 200. And you're saying we want to build the clubhouse too at the same time, and, you know, roads to get there, whatever, but to build the clubhouse too, why don't we compromise and meet the 200 and 400 and meet at 3? That, that kind of makes sense, that's a sensible argument, I can get behind that. I, I understand the logic, it's not necessarily what I like. I don't like necessarily coming back and making concessions after having gone down a, a road, pardon the pun, um, and then coming back and saying, "We're going to change a little bit of what we were doing before as far as the timeline goes." Um, that gets to be a little bit problematic for me. So if we say no to this, you have to build a pool at 200. Um, and substantially complete it, however vague that might be, at 200. Maybe that means there's no water in it yet, or the chlorine hasn't arrived. I don't know what substantially complete means either, but it means more than just started. So that's, that's the language. I'm still getting hung up on that, but I'll go to the rest of the council here. Councilmember Bedore?
Uh, just one more thing, and I hate to, uh, belabor some of this, but this is where it gets me. I, I get what's going on, what you're trying to do, completely understand. But you came to us with a thing that made it sound like this is just going to be an easier thing if we can do these both, because we can put the equipment under the, the house and, you know, under the clubhouse and all of this, and, and that sounds great. I'm okay with that. But what I'm not okay with was when a resident of that area came and said, "We're good with waiting to have it all done by 3," and I think all of us heard that, and I, I think that you both heard that as well, and no one went, "Oh, we should probably clarify this for you right now. It will not be done at 300, that's when we're starting." And that's what we're here to do, is to help someone like that who has got misinformation and thinks that it's okay, and is probably going back to his people and saying, "Yeah, I talked." And then it comes out, "Oh no, it turns out they're not going to start till 3," and that person looks like a fool. We look like a fool for letting it, it happen to him, and that's the kind of stuff that we have to guard against, and that's why we're here. I am more than happy to make things easier for development to go through, but I am not good with you standing there and letting a member of our city say, "It's all good, we're good with letting it be done by 3," and then letting you just let him leave without correcting that. And I'm sorry to put that on you, but you're standing here as the representative of Ivory Homes, so you unfortunately have to take that. That is not good, that is not the way I like people doing business in my city, letting someone leave thinking something is one way, and it's not. And that's what I'm going to say to that.
Well, he did, he did tech, he, he got my phone number and texted me. Well, he did, he did tech, he, he got my phone number and texted me and asked for me to give him an update, but he said he had to leave, so I didn't get a chance to, yeah, correct him, but I would be happy to do that.
We, we know where to reach him. Councilmember Bloom.
Uh, a lot, thank you, uh, Councilmember Bedore for saying some of the concerns I had. I, I would vote yes if we, uh, go back to the existing sentence, but change it to 300, and I will be happy to pass that.
I think they said they can't.
Councilmember Whitelock.
So, so here's where I'm hung up on this, is because I understand you're new to the project, but it's not like we did this in a day. And Ivory Corporation brought this to us and said at 200 and 400, they could do this. And they already knew, I would hope, that roads had to go in and infrastructure had to be put in.
Yeah.
So that's really my frustration, because they said they could do it by those times. You want to compromise, we're willing to compromise and say, okay, 300. But I, I would think that even whether you're building a building or building a pool, you'd still need water, you'd still need electricity. And in a development like that, you'd still need a road. So I understand that it pencils out better for you, and maybe there's a compromise, but I don't think the compromise is to just give you the 300 that you're asking for.
Well. Appreciate that, thank you. Uh, Mr. Anderson, before the,
I just, I just wanted to suggest, I don't know if, uh, if Mr. Dinsdale can make commitments for Ivory Development at a public meeting, there may be a benefit to, uh, bring this back to another council meeting after they have time to discuss what it sounds like all of you are commenting about.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about that procedurally as well, I'm not sure if we want to just change what's been signed, because you guys have signed this.
Maybe, maybe a better way to ask is that, um, uh, you know, let, if we had to do a pool by 200 units, what, what we would likely do is,
Which you do.
Uh, yes.
Currently, yes.
Well, like I said, I, I don't think it's clear, I think we've got an argument to say that we would begin it at the 200th certificate of occupancy. But, uh, you know, it's likely that we would build it, uh, adjacent to where the current homes are, and then build the clubhouse separately, because the, the timing just doesn't work to get them both done by that time. So maybe a better way to ask to you guys, what I'm asking is, now that we have done, um, some more planning and, and work, like you said, a, a plan was done, and it's, uh, took a long time, I'm sure, and it's, it's very high level, but now that we have the detail and the planning of, you know, what is going to make a really good clubhouse and a good pool area. Um, you know, we know what construction needs to happen to make that happen, and that would work, um, at the 300th certificate of occupancy. So maybe that's my request is, you know, to build them both together, and, um, so maybe I am asking to delay the pool from 200 to 300. But, but I feel like that gives us the opportunity to make a good clubhouse, a good pool, a good layout for the, the site, that will just be a, a good benefit to our residents there.
Councilmember Green. My question for staff is, when we first did this subarea plan, we only had enough water for 80 units. And I'm sitting here listening to this discussion. Do we have the water to build more than the 80? Because we haven't finished the tanks up there.
We, we have, since that time, we have finished the zones, an additional zone six tank and brought it online.
So zone six has come online, and so we're okay to increase the number of units? I, I, I'm, I'm not opposed to the, the current wording of the sentence that's supposed to be substituted. I'm really not. Although, I, this, this is, this is the place that give me just a little bit of heartburn, is that it says that we'll commence construction of the pool and clubhouse by the time of the issuance of the 300th certificate of occupancy. The other one did say substantial, it's, it did say it would be substantially complete by the 200, so, um, it was, it, it should have been, but I guess my, my issue is the resident, the residents, based on the current sentence, aren't going to have any clue when the, the clubhouse and pool are going to be done, because three, it's commencing. Because it, it commences at the 300th certificate of occupancy. And I don't want to sound cynical, but I will, a little bit. It would be very easy to manipulate certificate of occupancy, and, you know, all of a sudden we're at 295, and we stall that out for another, you know, year, and then we start construction, and then it's another year. You, you see where I'm going with that? I would, I would actually, if, if, a- and, and I think I kind of agree where, uh, council office director Anderson has directed us, I think that maybe we have a little bit more time to work on this, because nothing was in a big hurry, according, there was no time critical here. What I'm wondering is, is there a way that we could put that was, that's mutually agreeable, agreeable to, to Ivory and to the city? I don't want to get hung up over some of these words, but is there something that we can do that's mutually agreeable, that it's like, um, you know what the time phase is, and, and, and so then we put in, so I'm just throwing, I'm just making a hypothetical at this point, that, but that you commence construction of the pool by January 1st, 2036, you know, I'm just throwing out a number, right? You, you start, you, you come up with a number where it's based on construction schedules and feasibility, and it's not necessarily tied to the certificate of occupancy, you see where I'm going? And I'm wondering if there's, there would be a better, if that would be a better way for you guys to better plan, to cert, you know, market, and, and maybe there's market factors that we don't know about, that we need to build in and everything else. I want to be sensitive to the market factors, house construction, interest rates. You know, you, you, you know, if, hea- heaven forbid, you know, you build all 300 homes next week. You know, you know, I'm sure there are some people that would love that in the governor's office, right? They'd love to have you have all 400 houses in this phase finished in the, in the next year. I don't think that's probable, but if, if that did occur, then all of a sudden you've got to build the, the construction in the clubhouse in the next year, right? And so I'm wondering if there's not a, a, if we, if we take, took a pause. And so I'm going to make that motion, I'm going to make the motion that we postpone ordinance number 2412, to come back no later than December 31st, 2024, that'll give us four months, and if you bring it back faster, we're okay. Um, no later, that, that we postpone this, to no later than December 31st, 2024, um, for further refinement of this language.
Can I ask a question about that?
Hang on one second. I made the motion. Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Shelton to, postpone this until no later than the end of this year. I'm going to leave it at the council for a minute for discussion to that motion. This is a council motion. Any, any discussion of that motion? I will, I will speak in favor of the motion, I think it, this, this little point has to be ironed out, because I don't know if any of you ever have the occasion to drive 40th West between 90th South going south, there's a house on the west side of the, or the east side of the road that has been under construction for about 15 years. Now, if this pool is commenced at the 300th occupancy, but has no deadline for completion or substantial completion, it could be like that house. So I, I think it's important that this gets, that we have a, a timeline for completion, not just a timeline for commencement. So I'm going to be in favor of this motion. Councilmember Green.
And, and I'm, I'm just going to jump in, um, reading my fellow council members. If we don't postpone it, they're going to vote no tonight.
Oh, sure, yeah.
And, and you don't want to be in that situation. So what I'm, what I'm just saying, if you, if, if you, we want to work on this, and we can work on it in two or three weeks and bring it back in, uh, in two or, in, in two meetings, I don't care. I'm just putting enough timeframe that everybody can, that, that if there needs to be something that you take, we can take a pause and say, what's approp, you know, Ivory can take a look and say, what's appropriate, or whatever, knowing that you've heard the sentiment of the council. I don't want to, look, I, here's my opinion, I don't want to get hung up over when the, the, the swimming pool is completed. I want to get you guys into this process and get the houses built in the phase, right? Uh, and so that's, that's, but i- if we're going to get hung up over when the pool is get completed, and it really screws up, and it, and what that doesn't do is if we deny that, that means it denies the subarea one development plan too, which is a good one, which is decent. Right? And I don't want to screw that up by denying it, and then we have to go through all this other nonsense, and, you know, you deny things, and then you got to wait a year, or whatever the, whatever the rules are on this stupid stuff. I want to just take that brief pause, take that timeout, you know, just before we go into the last two minutes of, take that timeout at the, at the two minute, at the two minute warning. Take that, uh, timeout, go to the sidelines, figure this out, so that in the last two minutes, we get this worked. Does that make sense?
Yes, and, and my question, and I'm, I'm happy to do that, I think that's, yeah, we're, we can add dates, and, and like you said, a deadline for completion. Uh, those are great ideas. Um, there is urgency to get the subarea, um, approved, because we're, we can't do anything else until this is approved, we want to, we have our next preliminary plat ready to submit. Um, but we need to wait till this is approved. So I guess my question is, would you be willing to approve that minus the change to the units? And, and I'd be happy to come back and work those details out with you guys, and put some dates to it.
Councilmember Green.
And, and, and I'd be okay with, I'm not sure that the document written in front of us allows us to do that. Um, because, because it's all on the same attachment. I- is that right, Duncan?
That, that is correct, that, uh, the way the ordinance 20 dash 35 is currently drafted is it approves, uh, concurrently both the amendment to the development agreement as well as the amended development plan.
I'd be willing to modify, uh, if, if we want.
Yeah, change the wording if, if you want.
I could change the wording of the motion to postpone this and enough, and then bifur, what I, what I would say is, we would, uh, if we want to modify the motion, is we would postpone this and bifurcate the two items.
Do you want to withdraw your motion? Um, this is high, we're, we're a little bit out of order right now.
I don't think I can, um, I withdrawing, we,
You can withdraw the motion at any time.
There's no time sensitivity on the change to the, you know, 200 and 300 and 400 units, but,
All right.
Uh, we are held up from submitting anything else, um, until the subarea is,
Generally, under Roberts' rules, once we've made a motion in a second, that it goes to, it's the council's motion, and withdrawing it is not, is generally not.
It's up to the council, you can withdraw it.
Or we, okay.
Or you can make a substitute motion, or you can amend it, or you can do whatever you want.
I'm gonna, let's, let's amend the motion, and, and then we can just get the, we leave the motion as it was, that we postpone this until December,
No later than.
No, no later than December, December bifurcating and bringing the subarea one development plan for the 89 acres back to the next meeting.
Which is September 11th.
Which is September 11th.
And, and that is doable, we could easily have two separate ordinances and bring the one back to the next meeting.
Hold on one second, we have a motion to amend, we have a proposed amendment to the motion. Do you want to still second the proposed? Okay, okay, I'm going to, okay, I'm going to take a little Roberts, uh, chair initiative here. I'm going to wipe all the motions and come back to Councilmember Green to make a nice, clean motion, can I do that, Josh? Alan, parliamentarian, but.
Just withdraw the motion, that's easier.
Okay.
I'm not sure that we can actually withdraw the motion under Roberts' rules, but.
To withdraw, there just needs to be no opposition from the rest of the council.
Is there any opposition for withdrawing the motion? Okay, so what I'm going to move is that we postpone ordinance number 2412, and bifurcate the proposal, bringing back the subarea development plan by September 11th, and the amendment to the Jones Ranch Master Development Agreement by December 31st, 2024.
Okay, so we have a motion from Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Cindy, are we clear on the motion-ish?
It's the, the bottom line is, split the two, bring back the subarea development plan by September 11th, and bring back the MDA amendment by December 31st.
Would it be okay with the council if we were also able to submit our preliminary plan for review in the meantime contingent on approval of our subarea plan?
That would be a good question for legal after, after we're done with this, so.
Okay.
Let's, let's go to discussion of the motion, and I will, I don't, I don't know that I'm real happy about this, but I see, I see where we are, and I see why we're here. Just be so much cleaner if we could just add in three words into that one sentence, and we just pass this. But, um, I just, I just want to point out, there is an approved subarea plan already. There is an approved master development agreement already. It's signed by the city, it's signed by the developer, everybody's weighed in, it's all been signed. We want to make changes to that, then we have to discuss the changes to that and vote on those. But we're not not approving something that's already approved, it's already approved, it's already in there, we've already got language on the table, you can proceed building homes like you've been doing for the last year and a half, two years that this has been going on. It can still, it can still happen while we're working through the changes, is, is all I'm.
Well, not necessarily, because.
Whether it can or can't, it's, it's not a, there's, there's already an agreement in place.
There, but the, but what they're looking for is the modification of the subarea plan that changes the way the houses in the street are going to be laid out.
Yeah, I, I understand.
And, and we can't just say, well, go back and build it based on the old one, because it doesn't work. Um, be, because of the utilities and the streets and those kind of things. So what I'm trying to do with this motion is if we could bifurcate this tonight, I would. Um, but I don't think we can, given the way the ordinance is, that the ordinance is written. Um, yeah. So i- if we postpone, if we postpone this, So i- if we postpone, if we postpone this, um, the approval of the, the sub area plan for two weeks, um. Yeah, you know, that's, that's all I'm saying is postpone the sub area plan for two weeks so that the staff can, split, delete the pages from the ordinance so we can approve the sub, the sub area plan. And then we can argue about the words in the MDA about when the pool ought to be completed.
All right, councilmember Whitelock.
This is really a question for you, Chair and Vice Chair. Um, I mean, our agendas are already there, but I'm happy to let them come back in two weeks with everything. Would that be amenable to you to put it on? So to me, I don't, I certainly am not a developer. I certainly don't draw up plans. But if I wanted something done, I'd certainly get it done in two weeks. So I'm just curious, can you bring everything back in two weeks?
Yes, you bet. Now, with one question, do you want us to come and discuss the timing, the dates with you guys? Or should we just work with staff?
Staff.
Staff, knowing what we've, what our residents, what your residents that share us, with us, what they are counting on and what we've set up here, then yes, discuss it with staff. Then I'm going to withdraw my second because I'd rather this whole thing just come back and, and with the other motion, that's possible. So I'd rather not bifurcate it. I think everything can get done in two weeks.
I will replace her second with a second. Councilmember Lamb.
Thank you. I, I just wanted to, uh, say to councilmember Green, I agree with you in splitting this out. We can't bring it all back because right now it seems like we can't move forward with the pool unless it's at a certain thing. So it needs to be split up. It can't all come back in two weeks. So in two weeks, only that can't come back is everything but the pool. The pool portion would have to come back at a different time. Is that? So I, I guess what I'm saying is right now the majority aren't happy with the way the pool code is written. They want it done at 300, done at 350. And Ivory's already told us the way it's set up and with the way the costs are, they can't do that. So in two weeks, he can't come back and make us happy because he can't come back and say, we'll have the pool at 300. They just, that's what they've said they can't do. So the only way to make it work is to come back with everything but the pool in two weeks. That's all I'm saying.
All right, um, let's go ahead and have a vote on the motion. This does not have to be roll call. This is procedural. So all in favor of the motion as it's written by, made by councilmember Green, seconded by councilmember Jacob. Because councilmember Whitelock was true or second. Uh, Mr. Anderson?
So the, the motion is to delay or to postpone 2412 procedurally. That's, that's.
Well, that's sort of, okay, so for clarification.
I need, I need clarification because.
The motion is 2412 needs to be rewritten. So that, so that the attachments aren't all lumped into one attachment and we can approve one piece and not the other piece. Right now, we could do this from the dais, but it would be really messy. We'd have to, we'd have to go into section one of the ordinance and say, you're no longer attached collectively as attachment one is approved. And then we'd have to go into attachment one and say, this is the part we're not approving and split that out into another attachment that, you know, it would be really, really messy to do. So it's easier if we can go in with the delete key and just move some paragraphs around and then resubmit it.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jacob, if I could ask one more question, would, would it help if the wording changed from certificate of occupancy to building permit? That's a little more definite thing. And then like you mentioned, the concern of having some home under construction indefinitely.
Um, I'm going to table that till we vote on this real quick. Um, so all in favor of the motion to postpone this into two parts, say aye.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? No, okay, so we now have direction on it. I'll let you work out the specific language with the staff. I think what the general concern is, is that we need a day when the pool's going to be done, not when the pool's going to be started. Because like that house on 40th West, it's in South Jordan, so I shouldn't complain too much, but, you know, you can commence construction and make it last forever and we don't, that's not what we want. Whether it's building permit, certificate of occupancy, or, you know, number of chimneys installed in the neighborhood, I don't care. Give me a number and make it a good, nice compromise from what we have existing and give us a good reason to approve you're delaying it by 100 homes or whatever.
I'll get you a good number and, um, I'll, I will also make sure I speak with the residents, especially the one that came and commented. So they're aware of, of the plan.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to go ahead and hopefully stick to, stick to good procedure going forward. That one got kind of off the rails here and I apologize for that. Uh, the next item is, is public hearing B. It's, uh, resolution 24 dash 033 regarding a fee waiver of $330 for street sign closure fees at Veterans Memorial Park for the Jordan School District Family Fair Event. Mr. Anderson?
Thank you. So, uh, the Jordan School District, uh, typically holds a family fair event. Um, this is scheduled for September 5th, so this is the last council meeting, uh, before the event is being held. I do need to let the council be aware that, uh, Mr. Clegg came up to me and, uh, indicated that the, the price is incorrect, the dollar amount, the 330. Um, that was the information that was provided to the council office, not from Mr. Clegg. So the correct amount, and I, the reason I'm disclosing this to you is because the amount is slightly higher, which, uh, we can't go over 1% of the budget, so, so bear with me. Uh, there's an encroachment fee of $286 and then a, a local lane restriction of 150. So the total amount is $436. So it's $106 higher than, uh, what's on the agenda. And what they're doing is, uh, they're holding their family fair event at the Veridian Library. And they would like, uh, just for overflow purposes, the folks that are attending at Veridian to be able to walk across, uh, the loop road there to be able to get to Veterans Park. Uh, there is no mass gathering permit that's required because they are in a fixed facility. There's no deposit requirements for this particular, uh, encroachment and lane restriction. And state law prohibits the city from waiving fees once requests surpass 1% of the city budget. 1% of the city budget for fiscal year 25 is $740,056. This is the first fee waiver request of this budget year, so obviously you've, you have not come close to the 1%. And granting the fee waiver would contribute to achieving the city council budget priority related to citizen engagement, providing opportunities for residents to engage in their community through diverse events and encouraging good neighbor programs. So this is a public hearing. Um, and that is what is before you at this time.
Alan?
Councilmember Green, what was the number again?
The correct number, uh, and with thanks to Brian Clegg, our public works director, is $286 for encroachment, 150 for the lane restriction, for a total of $436.
$436. Thank you.
Well, I was going to be okay at 330, but I don't know, but no, I'm just kidding. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing? All right, let's go ahead and open the public hearing on this. If you are interested to speak to a, a fee waiver of $330, this is your opportunity. We have a, a three minute time limit, whether you're online or in the room. Anybody in the room? Come on, you know you want to. Just kidding. All right, and see nobody in the room. Is there anybody online with a hand raised for this one?
There, there is one individual online and they have not raised their hand.
Wonderful. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring this back to the council for discussion, arguments, motions, sub-motions, withdrawn motions. Councilmember Lamb?
Thank you, Chair. Um, when this first came up, I had, I had a, a question about this and I don't know that I ever got the answer. I know Chair Jacob knows about it as well. Uh, with the event moving to the Veridian, um, they are not holding any of their event in the park. It's all been held at the Veridian. And so my question is, why are we even closing the road? Now, I, I hear it's for overflow purpose, but none of their events will be happening in the park, just that it's an overflow opportunity. Um, what this doesn't say is that during that time, someone else has already rented the, um, the pavilion, which means we can't close the entire ring road because someone's using the pavilion. So, uh, I, I guess before I'm even going to, uh, consider a fee waiver is, I'm not really understanding why we're closing the road and nobody's really giving me a reason other than so they can walk across it.
Mr. Anderson, I think that's a question for you.
Yeah, it is true. It was mentioned in the RCA that, uh, in the request for council action, that the Veterans Memorial Park Pavilion has been reserved by another group. Um, what the request is of the council, uh, by the Jordan School District was to close a portion of Ring Road so that overflow of the Family Fair at the Veridian can go into the park, not at the pavilion, but just be able to overflow into the park. And I don't have, uh, any additional information.
I, I, I guess, I'm not understanding the overflow. Is it just overflow so they can walk to the park? Or are they going to have booths and other things at the park?
I, I don't believe the request is to, to, to put booths in the park. Um, it's just for people to walk, uh, kids to walk across Ring Road.
Cause typically I would say yes to something, just not have a problem with it, but I just don't understand why we're closing it other than just to close it because they want to be able to walk across the street, so.
Councilmember Green?
So just to be clear, we're not voting to close the road. We are voting to grant the fee waiver because they're, which will close the road, but they've applied for the, the road closure. If we deny the fee, they just have to pay the $436. And they can do that and we can't stop it. So the, the point here is, is that we're not voting to close up, to close the road. We're voting on the fee waiver.
That, that is correct. The, um.
With that, I am going to move to approve resolution number 2433 regarding a fee waiver of $436. And in the ordinance substituting, uh, 436 for 330 in lines 36, 45, 53, and 65.
I'll second that. And those, that was exactly right. That's exactly what I was going to say. Line numbers and everything. Um, so we have a motion by councilmember Green, seconded by councilmember Jacob. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Shelton?
I would just like to agree with councilmember Lamb that it doesn't make a lot of sense to close this road, but I guess that's really not our call, so.
Councilmember Whitelock?
And I'd just like to put out there, if you're asking for a fee waiver, whether it's 50 bucks or 500 bucks or $5,000, I really think you should send someone because they could probably answer the question. Somewhere in my mind says they're having food trucks and that might be the reason, but I can't find the email as I don't know which of my emails boxes they sent it to, my own, my school board one, city council, I don't know. But I think that might be the reason. But again, I just want to put it out there. And I would hope that when they were asked for those, that we could start out inviting them and letting them know the council would like them to come.
Thank you. Councilmember Bloom?
I agree with councilmember Whitelock. If we're doing fee waivers with taxpayer money, I want all of the information. Like, yes, okay, you're planning to close the road, but give us the information so we can make an educated decision on the fee waiver because we don't have the information. If we knew it was going to be this and that, all of a sudden, all this fun and it's safety thing and oh my gosh, yeah, absolutely. But we have nothing to go on and I don't like that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, I will just point out that, uh, I looked it up on their website really quick and it does say food trucks. And, uh, but, but the funny thing is, is it says there will be food trucks, games, prizes, and activities for kids from 4 to 7 PM inside the Veridian. How are they going to get the food trucks inside the Veridian? That's what I want to know. Big garage door. That's, yeah, that's not ours. Anyway, our, our, uh, motion on the table is to approve the fee waiver and only the fee waiver, not the road closure or anything else. Or the food trucks, or which food trucks, or whether they're gluten-free food trucks. So with that on the table, any further discussion? Seeing none, this is a resolution, so roll call vote.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
No.
Councilmember Bloom?
No.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedar?
Yes.
I show that motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my count as well. All right, our next public hearing is item 6C on the agenda. This is related to the issuance of the Series 2024 Sales Tax Revenue Bonds. Let's go to Ms. Stack, our revenue bond expert.
Pusha Button, right? Um, Council, I'd like to just update you on, um, the bond rating presentation that we went to this, um, past week. Left Wednesday and presented at Fitch Ratings on Thursday and S and P on Friday. Um, the presentations went very well. Um, Corbin, the mayor, and I attended those presentations, um, to represent the city as did our bond municipal advisor, um, Laura Lewis. We believe that we'll be receiving our rating back on September 6th, so we are anxiously waiting that. Um, but we anticipate our credit rating to, um, increase from what it currently is, which is double A minus. Um, we, this portion of, um, the steps to issuing the bond, we're within the 30-day contestability period. So as soon as you adopted the parameters resolution, that started the clock for, um, a 30-day period for the public to provide comment to you. During that period, we're required to hold a public hearing and that's what this is this evening. Um, following, um, this evening during your business items, you will be, um, uh, considering a resolution to adopt the form of the preliminary official statement. So I'm going to kind of tell you what that is. The official statement and any other actions that are necessary to issue the bond, um, for them, and you're authorizing the mayor to sign those. The preliminary official statement is used by our underwriters to pre-sell our bonds to investors. So our underwriters are, um, Key Bank and they will be selling our, or pre-selling our bonds. So they will be out talking to investors about our project and our bonds using the preliminary official statement. Um, following our credit rating, um, an official statement will come out after the sale of our bonds. So the preliminary official statement is provided to investors to entice the appetite for the purchase of bonds. And then following the sale, once it's all finalized, the official statement is issued and that becomes our binding contract for those investors, between us and those investors. So we have two more actions before we, well, three more actions before we take, um, go to market for our bonds. This public hearing, the end of the contestability period, the adoption of this resolution this evening, and, um, finally the, um, receipt of our credit rating. And so we will, um, disclose all of that to you in the next couple of weeks. So this evening, um, we ask that you receive public comment related to the issuance of this bond. And then in your business items, we'll discuss the resolution to adopt the preliminary official statement. Do you have any questions about the rating presentation or what went, or would you like copies of the presentation as it was provided to our credit, credit analysts?
I think copies of the presentation would be great.
Okay, I will get those out to the council.
Um, so what is, is there any, there's no action being requested from the council tonight on this, is that correct?
Not during this item. There will be action during your business items.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is to open for a public hearing to, uh, the public speak to just this bond, a kind of in general?
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Any questions for staff besides what I just said? All right.
Thank you.
Seeing none, um, we'll go ahead and open this for the public hearing. This is, um, your opportunity to share your thoughts on this issuance of sales tax revenue bonds to the city councils. Is there anybody here who'd like to speak to that? Is there anybody here? There's nobody here. All right, I'm seeing none in the room, uh, and, and Mr. Hallmark is shaking. here. All right, I'm seeing none in the room, and Mr. Hallmark is shaking his head that there's none online. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring this back to the council for no particular action. Any discussion or question on this before we move on? All right, it's moving along. Item 5D or 6D, 5D on the online agenda, 6D on the printed agenda because the call to order was not on the online agenda. This is Public Hearing D in any case. Ordinance 24-34, Amendments to Title 14 of the subdivision regulations and Title 15 Permit Processing for Development Review Procedures, Compliance with House Bill 476, Modernization of Submission Requirements. Taylor Jensen, Mr. Jensen, how are you?
I'm well. How are you? Thank you.
Good.
Chair and council. So as mentioned, we're bringing forward some changes to Title 14 and 15. These are specifically to just require, to comply with new state law. We presented this to the council of the committee of the whole about a month and a half, two months ago. The only changes from that meeting to what you're seeing tonight are we added some additional references there that future changes will just be in line with state law. We wanted to make sure that was extra clear after feedback from the council. We did take this to Planning Commission where it received a positive recommendation, six to one. Our one negative vote was, I think primarily because the commissioner didn't feel like the state should be telling us to make these changes. So among the provisions of 476, which this will address, we as a city are no longer able to require subdivision improvement plans at both preliminary and final. So we'll be just getting those at final at this point. Initial reviews have a time limit of 15 days and final submissions need to be reviewed within 20 business days. And there's a total, a limit on the total number of views we may conduct, whereas in the past it was not limited, now it is. So in addition to making those changes, we just also modernized the code slightly, reduce, removing all of our references to paper plan sets because we're requiring everything electronically now. So with that, we're received a recommendation for approval from Planning Commission, and I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions for the staff on this modification, this ordinance, before we go to the public hearing? I'm seeing none for before the public hearing. Let's see if there's any after the public hearing. First of all, let's open the public hearing. This is for Ordinance 24-34, amending Title 14 and Title 15 of our code to comply with state law. If you're here to speak to this, go ahead and come on up to the microphone. Just not seeing any invisible people coming up. Anybody online, Mr. Anderson?
There are three people online, none of whom have raised their hand.
Thank you for that. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing, although it is fun to hear how many people kind of fluctuate in and out of the meeting. And bring it back to council for discussion and/or emotion, and there's a few lights. Let's go Councilmember Bloom.
Are we discussing? Are we going ahead and doing a motion?
This one, we're actually needing to move on. We have a, an approval.
All right. Does anybody else discuss? I was going to go ahead and do a motion. Okay.
We got a couple of discussions, I guess. Councilmember Green, you're next. Okay. I'm, I'm for this amendment with, except for three lines. Lines 141, 142, and 143. It says, and I quote, "In accordance with the city, having adopted the council-mayor form of municipal government, the community development director under the direction of the mayor is authorized to develop and adopt," and then we're missing a word, "promulgate a development process manual." Can we amend, I, 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 can we just say, "The community development director may develop, adopt, and promulgate a development process manual and make that simple and eliminate about 6,000 words?" What does anybody else, I hate amending from the dais, but that, that, that sentence is just, I don't know, it just seems crazy that we have to explain our form of government and that we adopted that when we know what our form of government is, but that's just me.
What line is that again?
141. 141, 142, and 143. But you know what? I'll go ahead, I'll go ahead and chime in on, on that if I can call my own name and, and just say, this is one of those preference things and it's not broke, but it could be fixed, but it's not broke. So in the, in the, in the, in the attitude of preferring to not amend from the dais, I'm fine just leaving it. I mean, yeah, it's wordy, but it's just wordy.
If I could, Councilchair, you could easily just drop that first clause and just start with the words, the community development director. But at least in staff's mind, the word adopt replacing promulgate was intentional. Of course, you can change it to whatever you'd like, but.
I couldn't, I couldn't see this, this strikeout through promulgate, so. You know what? He is right. We could just strike the one phrase.
Good. Into, into the comma.
We don't have a motion on the table yet, do we? So there you go. If you wanted to put that into a motion, you could. Is there any other discussion or questions, comments, pontifications, preferences? I'll do it. Go ahead, Councilmember Green. I'm going to move to approve Ordinance Number 2324, amending.
It's 2434.
2434, thank you. Move to approve. No, it's 24, oh, I'm looking at 2436 there. Sorry, that's why. 24, 2431, wait a minute. No, because, hold on. The, the, oh, that's the bond. All right, I got too many tabs open. 2434, striking the phrase in line. 141 and 142, beginning with the, striking the phrase, "In accordance with the city, having adopted the council-mayor form of government, municipal government, comma," strike that first line. So it begins, "The community development director is authorized." Yeah. Yeah, so. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Whitelock. Any discussion to the motion?
I'll just say I was fine with how it was, but I'm fine with this, too.
Councilmember Shelton?
I'll just say I'm in support of this because as a city, we should follow state law.
As a city, we have kind of no choice. All right, yet we still get to vote. It's kind of funny. We can vote no, and I don't know what would happen if we did, but we could. All right, seeing no further discussion. This is a, an ordinance, so let's go to a roll call vote.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes seven to zero.
All right, cruising right along. Let's go to Public Hearing E, 24, Ordinance Number 24-35, amending the 2009 Municipal Code. When can we change the name of the municipal code so it's not 2009 anymore? The 2009 West Jordan Municipal Code, Section 14-3-4, Lot Line Adjustments. Mr. Gardner, good to see you.
So, good evening, council. Thank you. And this again is bringing the city into compliance with Utah law. And the changes in lot line adjustment, there are a few. The legislature, and so lot line adjustment used to be kind of a self-explanatory phrase, but now the legislature changed it. The lot is a lot in a subdivision and a parcel is outside of a subdivision. The legislature chose to change a lot line adjustment so that you could adjust a lot line with a parcel line. So that is the first change in it from the law. And then we've changed, as the council is aware, we've adopted engineering standards and park standards as land use regulation. So we've changed many of, or at least line 149, where it used to say zoning ordinance to the city's land use regulation. And number six is the lot line adjustment will otherwise complies with all other requirements of the law, including Utah code. And it references, when it talks about lot line adjustments and subdivisions in Utah code. And then again, this brings up, you know, we're bringing our ordinance into modern day where we'll have electronic copies submitted instead of paper. And the other change that was in late, in state laws, our ordinance used to say you had to have a, a survey and had to record a survey or an amended plat. But now a lot line adjustment can be done by an exchange of title between property owners. And that's right out of state law. And so in C zoning administrator approval, recording of a notice of approval, that one through four and then D, one and two are by and large with the change of a few words is what it says in state law. And so that's been added to our ordinance. And there are many communities around who disallow exchange of title. You bring an exchange of title in, the city will approve it. However, as if you can see in line number 177, it says, and this is on the legislative copy, "The zoning administrator shall approve a lot line adjustment application if the exchange of title will not result in a violation of any land use regulation." I have not been able to ever tell if you're violating a land use regulation through a description. And so what we're asking is that the council leave in the ordinance the requirement that a survey is brought in that illustrates setbacks, where buildings are, easements, property lines and such, so that planning, engineering, and our property people can review it and make sure that there's no easements that will be violated or city-owned easements will be violated because that has been done with lot line adjustments in the past. Anyway, so this ordinance will bring us into compliance with state law, this exchange of title. After we reviewed it, they can still record that at the county and that will act as the conveyance mechanism to change property deed, or they can create another deed on their own. Do you have any questions of me?
Yeah, I have, I have a question for you. Is, is the, the part about the survey?
Yes.
That, that was required, is no longer required, but you'd like to leave it in there anyway and require it for the, from the city as opposed to from, I guess, from the state requiring?
The state has never required a survey.
Okay. Is that, that's not in this specific ordinance, or is it?
It says.
Which, which line?
Checklist, including statement, let's see.
Are you looking at 163, 164, 56?
An electronic PDF copy of a survey, so it's 161, prepared by a licensed land surveyor, illustrating all relevant information described in the lot line adjustment application form and checklist. And I have the checklist somewhere if you want me to.
Yeah, and then there's a bunch of strike through.
And the reason we use checklist is because they're much more easy to modify than an ordinance. And what is required on the survey checklist is a drawing and legal description stamped by a surveyor. Illustrate the two affected lots, discern between the existing and proposed lot lines. Existing property lines will be dashed while the proposed lot lines are to be bold. So, so we can tell what's being changed. All property lines are to be dimensioned. Okay, describe the dimension of all existing easements. Describe what is contained in the existing.
I, I'm not really concerned with what's on the checklist. I'm just concerned that we get the code right.
The code is correct.
So, so you, you, the way it's proposed here is the way you'd like it to be approved. Okay.
Yes.
I just, I just wanted to double check that you weren't referring to something that else that needed to be stricken or added in.
It's the checklist that we're referring to.
Okay, my second, my second question of this is, does this substantially change, and there's that word again, gosh, I gotta stop using that word. Does this change very much the, the amount of work that may or may not be required for a lot line adjudge, adjustment, and therefore maybe the fee that we charge might, might?
It doesn't, because that's, this is what we do now.
Okay, so this is just kind of find the process that's already in place and that is reflected in the fee that's already in.
And reflecting what is in Utah code.
Right.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
Now, the workload will not increase.
Go up or down? Okay, that was my question. Councilmember Green? So I have two questions. Are, do we have a legally defensible position, if it's not in Utah code, about the survey prepared by a licensed land surveyor, which costs some money? Is, are we legally defensible in having, requiring a survey there as part of the process?
Yes. And the reason I say yes is lot line adjustments are one of the areas that's, that are most, processes that are most potentially fraught with legal challenges and problems. The reason being is a lot of utility easements are along lot lines. And without a survey and a description to identify what areas are, you know, how that lot line is changing and how it's affecting easements and so forth, the city has no way to identify with certainty that there's not a problem occurring because the city has, in essence, the responsibility to not only identify its own easements, but to a certain extent has obligations under state law to make sure that no other public entity or utility provider and so forth is affected in the process of a, a lot line adjustment. So it's, it's a situation where probably more than other instances, we really have to have a surveyor to make sure that nobody's easement rights are being adversely affected.
Okay. And line 177 is actually, Mr. Gardner referred to it. When we, so we are directing the zoning administrator to approve this because it says shall. So if it, if it doesn't result in a violation of a land use regulation, you are required to approve that.
And under, in the Utah code, it says the land use authority, but we substituted zoning administrator so that we have a specific person here, which is me doing this or whoever. And that's what the law says. If it's not violating land use law, then you have to approve that lot adjustment.
So if, if the state statute says land use authority?
There's a lot of different land use authorities.
That, that's what, that was my, that was my next question is generally land use authority refers to a plan, the planning commission.
Right, but it's clear in LUDMA, Land Use Development and Management Act, that it's whoever the council designates in the code. So in some instances, you've designated the planning commission as a land use authority for certain things. In other instances, other types of applications, you've identified in the code, the zoning administrator as the land use authority.
Any further questions for staff before the public hearing? I cannot wait for the public to weigh in on this. All right, let's go to the public hearing on Ordinance 2435. If you'd like to speak to this, raise your hand online because I'll assume you're not in the room, because nobody's in the room. Is there anybody online raising their hand? We'll give them another five seconds. Mr. Anderson? Mr. Anderson?
There are two people online. No one is raising their hand.
All right. I'm only slightly surprised. All right, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing, bring this back to council for discussion and a motion, hopefully. Any discussion? Councilmember Lamb?
If there's no discussion, I move to approve ordinance number 2435, amending the 2009 West Jordan municipal code section 143-4, lot line adjustments.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Lamb, seconded by councilmember Green. Any discussion to the motion? Councilmember Whitelock?
I'm just going to put out there that I think we should review the fees. I didn't hear you. Can you say that? Can you speak into your mic this way? Yeah. I think that we should review the fees.
Thank you. All right, I don't see any further discussion to the motion, so let's vote.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes, seven to zero.
All right, let's hit one more public hearing, just because these have been so exciting. German, a German word came to mind and I don't know the English word for it. All right, this is public hearing F 24-36, ordinance 24-36, amending the code regarding interchange overlay zone development standard section 136K-5, development design requirements, and IOZ design and development standards and requirements for commercial buildings and site design. And this is Mr. Gardner again.
Thank you again. The interchange overlay zone has design standards for residential office and commercial buildings. There is a developer that wants to construct a hotel at Copper Rim. And he was, they've noticed that commercial buildings can only be three stories, or office buildings can be four stories, and they don't build three story hotels, this particular developer. I'm not saying there isn't three story hotels, but this particular developer does not build them. And so they were asked if that, if the council would consider modifying the design guidelines. And so you can see in lines 167, it goes from a maximum of three stories to 60 feet or five stories, or if adjacent to Mountain View corridor, 85 feet or seven stories, which is consistent with what would be a crossed Mountain View on the former Rob Bowman piece of property. And then with that, we've modified some of the architectural elements, or at least proposed for the council, that there be architectural elements above the entryways. The other concern they had, and this has not been the first time this has been brought up, is that with commercial developers, they don't like to be restricted. Is it better if I go to this mic? I don't, these. Well, just go back. A lot of the commercial people are concerned when you limit parking to behind buildings, particularly in a suburban location. And so the proposal would be to allow parking on all sides of the buildings. And then the original guidelines had zero lot lines for side and rear. We've proposed a 15 foot setback on that. And then of course, architectural features, I think is better than trying to describe them in the design guideline. We allow the planning commission to determine the architectural guidelines. And then lastly, on number eight, so on line number 179 and 182, we have removed a Bangater Highway for once and for all because the IOZ is not along Bangater Highway any longer. Do you have any questions for me? I hope I haven't been too confusing with this.
Let's go to councilmember Whitelock for questions.
I just wanted to know your rationale for going with the seven feet at seven story, 85 feet, instead of maybe 10 stories and a few hundred feet.
It was, quite frankly, it was matching what was on the Bowman piece adjacent to Mountain View corridor. That was the rationale. If you want to go 10 stories, we can change it to that. I'm not particularly, height doesn't bother me like it bothers others.
Yeah, it doesn't bother me either, especially adjacent to what will be a freeway. It seems to make sense there. And I just wanted to say I appreciate the step down towards existing residential. Thank you.
Councilmember Shelton?
I have a constituent who brought a concern to me about this, which was why not just make an adjustment for this one developer versus changing the entire IOZ code? Could you speak to that a little bit?
How do I do that?
You're more experienced than me.
There's, there's no kind of variance because if, if, and I'm going to use the first person, that's because if I was to do a variance or something like that, then what I'm doing is skipping the public process of the planning commission and city council and saying, it's okay with me, I'm one person, when it really is your decision. It's not a board of adjustment, it's not my, this is the only way I know of to do it, honestly.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamb?
I was going to go with the same thoughts there. Did they give you the, a height? Did they say we want four? Do they want, they want 10? Have they said?
No, they're four story. They built the hotel, I'm not going to hide anything, the hotel they want to build, they just built one in Bluffdale right next to Fat Cats.
Yeah, I mean, four stories, you see those everywhere you go when you're traveling. It's not a big deal. And the location of where it's at does not block anybody, so that's not my thing. I guess, I guess I'm worried that if we open this up now, then does somebody come in with a 10 story building or, you know, what, how are we limiting that?
Well, the, the height is 60 feet.
Okay. But yeah, I feel the same way as, as councilmember Shelton. Is there a way, and I would think there should be, or could be, where we could just do for this one?
You want to give a guy like me that kind of power?
No, you're, you're coming to us for one. So if someone else wanted to go higher, they'd have to come back again and get that other one. But that's another discussion apparently that we can't have right now.
But if we change the ordinance, then they have to follow the ordinance.
Then everybody qualifies.
Thank you, I'll, I'll, well, I have one question about the, the parking. Parking being confined to side, side backs or parking garages, or underneath a building, seems to have a specific goal in mind, and that is you're trying to limit kind of the sprawl of a parking lot, right? You're trying to make a more pedestrian friendly, you know, kind of a look to it. Like we have it on the, on the city center zone.
Yeah.
You know, the, the, the frontage has to be on the street and, you know, those kinds of things. That, that's, that's, that's a meaningful change in my mind. What is the, what is the reasoning behind that? Could a hotel not orient properly if it didn't have parking not allowed on the, on the front side?
I think it's just the design of the hotel.
Well, I'm asking, I'm asking Larry if there's a, if there's a, if, if it's a necessity for this kind of a development, or if it's just a, well, this is how everybody does it.
For this type of suburban hotel, they don't develop unless they have parking on all sides of the buildings. And I, I think most of them like to be able to surround, whether it's a Hampton Inn, Holiday Inn, this one, that, that is just the way they develop. And we are in a suburban environment, this, these, the exit guidelines that were written are very urban in nature. And I think we're.
Right.
Real estate is more limited than it is here. You know, and your other point, required structure parking would, would kill a lot of development for many, many years because it's very, very expensive.
Okay, I will, I'll, I'll keep my further comments on that too after the public hearing, but, but I definitely have opinions. Any other questions for staff before we open the public hearing and have this massive amount of people speak to this? All right, so no further questions, let's go ahead and open the public hearing and give you a right to speak even if you're not here. Anybody online, Mr. Anderson, who would like to speak to this? If you are online, raise your hand quickly.
Yeah, there are three people online and two have raised their hand.
Oh, we do have hands raised. Hallelujah.
I have, I have Aaron's iPhone and Chris McConaughey.
All right, let's go to, who's iPhone? In the order you set him.
Aaron.
Aaron.
A-A-R-O-N.
Okay, Aaron, when you come online, you should be able to unmute yourself and we'll give you three minutes. When you do come online, give us your name, just because I don't know if iPhone is your last name. If it is, that's great, just, just confirm it. Alan should be promoting you here so you can speak. Should be able to unmute yourself. Alan, is he ready? Should be ready?
Yeah, he just needs to unmute. Aaron, if you can hear us, just go ahead and unmute.
We can't hear you yet.
No, he's still muted. Would you like to go to Mr. McConaughey?
Yeah, let's, let's, Aaron, you have a minute to figure that out. Let's go to Mr. McConaughey. You should be able to unmute and we'll give you three minutes.
All right, did, has the mute worked for me?
Yep, you're good.
Awesome. Chris McConaughey, West Jordan resident. I'm trying to think about the hotel that's over in Jordan Landing, the Residence Inn. I think they've only got parking on, do they have parking just out in front and not on the street? I know the side next to the Best Buy Target doesn't have parking there, but that's what came to mind as the parking was being discussed. It seems like it could be doable with, without having to have parking on, on all sides, but maybe a little bit of flexibility, limiting it to which, which side does and doesn't have parking, just though it's not like a little island inside a sea of asphalt. Other than that, just want to say I appreciate the questions and the thought the council's giving. And if you guys have a second to pull up Google Maps and check that out, just to see how it would work over in Jordan Landing, that might not be a bad reference to make. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Aaron's iPhone. Aaron, you should be able to unmute and have your three minutes. Is his hand still up?
His hand is still up, I just need him to unmute.
Okay, Aaron, we're going to give you a, we're just going to go ahead and give you a 15 or 20 seconds to unmute. Otherwise, we'll invite you to submit comments via the council comment line or our email address, councilcomments@westjordanut.gov. But we'll give you a couple more seconds here.
Yeah, he's not unmuting.
It's, it's, it's apparently not unmuting. We're having technical difficulties. Councilmember Whitelock?
They're saying it's not working for them. Could they try calling in the other way?
I don't have a way for him to call in. It needs to come in through Zoom.
Via the Zoom, right? Phone wise? We want to give you every opportunity on this, but we are constrained by technology. Mr. Anderson seems to be working feverishly to get this to work. This is the really riveting part. Will it work? All right, Aaron, we're going to let you leave us a voicemail, or an email, or a voicemail that comes to our email. Please give us a call on our, on our voicemail line and we'll make sure your comment gets heard by everybody. But we'll go ahead and close the public hearing on this then. And we'll come back to the council for discussion and/or emotion. Is there any discussion? I've got a comment, but I'm going to let other people talk first. Councilmember Bloom?
I'm not hung up on the parking. I actually prefer the parking to be out front because it's safer. In fact, when I'm at hotels, I park in the front on purpose because that's where I know things are watched. So I'm okay with everything that they're, they're proposing. In fact, I'm extra okay that we're even getting a hotel out west. And I think it's a great location for it. And I am 100%. When I saw this in my homework over the weekend, I actually got excited about it and I read through it and I was like, absolutely. So that's where I'm at.
Councilmember Green?
I will just point out, so that, because I'm not, when we make the motion, this is just a Scrivener's error, but line 167, yes, line six, 167, where it says the maximum of 60, there's a space and the apostrophe is pointed the wrong way. It's the wrong, it's the wrong punctuation mark. So when we, when, when we pass this and we have the Scrivener's error ability to come change that, please just change that before we publish it.
Thank you. It's the maximum of 60 or five story. No, I'm just kidding. Councilmember Whitelock?
I'll just share that prior, Aaron, Aaron did contact me and he did have concerns about increasing heights in those zones. So I'm sure that was part of his thing. He is concerned that, you know, this isn't the only property. And, and he did ask the same as councilmember Lamb, Shelton, why we couldn't do it in what, just one area. But for me, it was setting a precedent. If, if we say yes to this guy in this area, the next guy is just going to come ask for the next area anyway. So, and I think it puts Larry in an awkward spot, so just wanted to share those where, I know, I know earlier those were his concerns, is the height.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing that. I do have a question then for probably Duncan on this, because it's, it's kind of a process question. And that is if Larry mentioned building heights and not issuing variances for building heights, what about for parking requirements or site plan requirements like that? Is that something that could be applied plan by plan instead of being changed for all commercial in the IOZ?
Keep in mind that these are mostly maximum or minimum requirements, right? So it's, it's intended to create a range. And I think what Larry's describing is that hopefully we're putting in place appropriate ranges that are likely to, to work for most people. But if it is outside of the range, most likely they'd have to come back. Our existing code does require, or does allow variances in situations if the percentage amounts are small. So if it's a really small requirement that allows for a variance, that's, that could be used. Otherwise, if it's something major or it's not allowable, then for that numerical variation, it might have to come back to you. for that numerical variation, it might have to come back to you for a text amendment. But it, I mean, it's, we talked about crystal balls earlier and not having a perfect crystal ball. You have to make your best guess, allow for some flexibility.
And no, I'm asking, I'm asking, let me clarify because I don't think, I don't think I said it well.
Okay.
I'm asking if we're changing this parking requirement, not the number of stalls.
Oh, okay.
But that instead of requiring this more urban look of a neighborhood, saying that, you know, your parking has to be behind the building.
Right, right.
To saying now your parking can be on all sides of the building. But we're applying that not just to a hotel or not just to the one site. We're applying this to all commercial in the IOZ, which could also extend to like the 90th and 56th West property. I, I, I just think, I think this is in here for a reason. And Larry nailed the reason. We did want a more urban look when this was brought forward. We wanted it kind of a more urban, these are our interchanges. These are our busy areas of the city, right? Or future busy areas. Right now, sure, it's a suburban, quiet street out there minus the construction and the traffic. But it's, it's houses in a grocery store on either end of that street and you don't have, it, it's not urban yet. But it's urbanizing. And we're going towards this standard. And I'm just wondering if, if we take out the standard and we say, no, suburban character is, is okay for all commercial, I'm just, I'm concerned that that doesn't give us the intent of what we passed initially when we put the IOZ in place. When we said we wanted this kind of urban look to it. Waving it for one hotel is, is, is maybe understandable, but changing it for all commercial, I, that's kind of a broader brush than I want to paint with. So is there a way to paint that narrowly?
There might be, and I might have to defer back to Larry because it might be more of a planning question. But if I understand correctly, what Larry was talking about is in addition to trying to create these standards, he's also trying to allow for flexibility, knowing that the business model for certain buildings might be such that they can't do parking a certain way or they want to do parking a certain way because that's the model that works for them. And if we're too limiting, then we're disallowing certain hotels or businesses to come in because our, our standards don't allow them to, to use their business model. But Scott or Larry probably has something more to add to that.
Well, if the council, man, these mics are not good.
Worked for me.
If the, if the council wants to narrow the scope, as you may recall, the IOZs are divided up into subzones. There's a picture of that there on the map.
The map, yep.
This, yeah. This particular area is identified as subarea B as in Boy. And if the concern is to expand this across all IOZ, that's something the council could consider. Since they're already divided up into little areas.
Right, but it would still apply to all of B, right? So like the furniture building, the furniture store that's coming, coming soon. Again, commencement versus completion is one of those things.
Substantial.
Substantial, yeah, it's a substantial thing. So, you know, right now, the furniture store needs to build the parking in the back, right? Or on the side. But we change this, it doesn't just apply to the hotel, it also applies to this furniture store. So in that same area. So anyway, it's just a thought. Councilmember Lamb?
All right, so here's what I'm seeing with all the information I've been given now. So previously, when I did my homework, just like you do, the first question I asked is, will this block someone's view? Because that's the first question you always get asked is, how tall is it going to be? Will, will it block the view? In the parcel location where he wants to build, no, it won't. So that's my first thing, great, that's what I like. Second thing is, if we want this certain hotel to come in, this certain hotel, from everything I've been heard and everything that's been said tonight, they have a certain way that they build their hotels. And for those who travel, you know that certain hotels are four stories with parking all the way around. That's what they're asking for. If they can't get that, they're not going to come. So then my third thing was what Scott just said. If we can have that area in which Councilman Shelton said, I would like it to be just in that subarea B because I think if we can, then we're not going to have four or eight story people asking in the other section of the IOZ. So if I'm hearing right, I would prefer just the subsection B in the area where this hotel is going to be, if that's possible.
Well said. Councilmember Green?
See, and, and I'm going to take total opposite here. If we're talking about the IOZ, we're only talking about, we're only talking about four pieces of property right now. We're talking about Bowman Zero, we're talking about Copper Rim, we're talking about 90th and 56th. Then across the street, the trunk ranch is developing. That's what we're talking about. I'd say that's a pretty narrow piece of property and it's not a great big zone. Two, when we talk about Furniture Row coming in, who wants to park in the back of the building and walk around a building to go to a retail store? No, you know, so if, if we're talking about practicality and it forced us to put the parking to the side or back or underneath the building, first underneath is, is extremely expensive or in a parking garage is extremely expensive. And so then it required us to park in the side or the back. Okay, well, depending on how long the strip mall is, you know, or whatever, it's, we, we've, we've got to, I think we have to look at that. The other thing is, remember what's going in across the street and the other part of IOZ on Bowman Zero. We've heard at least one, the property owner want to build a hospital there. I bet you the hospital wants to put parking on all four sides because most hospitals have, or a lot of hospitals have parking on all four sides. And you park out front in a lot of hospitals because that's where you get dropped off, right? And it depends, so I'm, I'm perfectly fine with parking being on all the, all the sides just because of the way, just because of the nature of retail and some of those service buildings and office buildings that we're talking about. I don't think that parking on all four sides is bad, but that's me.
Councilmember Bedore?
Just to add to that, I would never open a business if I was told my people couldn't park in front of it. That's why you have a front door. That's just a simple, simple thing. So that's, that's me. I've got no problems with, with parking around. And also, a lot of businesses have the area in the back so that that's where the deliveries can go so that they're not blocking their parking lot for people. So I'm good with that.
All right, any further discussion or emotion? Councilmember Green?
I'm going to move to approve ordinance number 2436, amending. I'm, you know, let's, let's just leave it at this. I, I move to approve ordinance number 2436.
Second?
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Green, seconded by councilmember Bloom. Is there a discussion to the motion? Okay, I'm, I'm going to vote no on this, not because I'm not in favor of this particular development that's asking for it, but just because I think, like I said before, I think the brush is a little bit broader than, than I want to paint with. I prefer, I, I wish, I would rather that we more narrowly tailor this to this specific application. But that's just me. So any other, any further discussion? All right, let's go ahead and vote.
Chair Jacob?
No.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
No.
I show the motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. And let's see, that's the end of our public hearings. So everybody who's here, you can leave now. Just kidding. Now there's business items. We've got just one, two, three business items. So hopefully we can get through these pretty quick. Business item seven A is ordinance 24-37, adopting the property tax rate for tax year 2024. This is the moment you've all been waiting for. Denise?
Um, yes, council, this is our final, final step before adopting the annual budget for fiscal year 2025. It has several discussions regarding the property tax rate. It's been disclosed as the property tax rate will be point 001378. That's the city's tax rate only, and it excludes the geo bond tax rate of point 00005. So the total tax rate for the city will be point 0014, wow, 28, sorry, my brain just went off. Uh, this represents a three and a half percent rate increase from our certified tax rate. We'll leave it in your capable hands. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Discussion or emotion? That should probably have the number in it, in the motion, I would think, right? 1428 is the number?
Yes.
Yep, okay. All right. Yep, okay, excellent. All right, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I'll move to approve ordinance 24-37, adopting the property tax rate for tax year, tax year 2024. Is that right? Second. Budget 2025, uh, point 001428. I just wanted it in the motion.
Now I'll second.
All right, a motion by councilmember Jacob, seconded by councilmember Lamb. Is there a discussion to that motion? The only thing I want to say is what I say every year. Last year's rate was point 001499. This year's rate is point 001428, which is a difference of point 000048 in the negative, yet we still call it a tax increase. Just saying. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilmember Shelton? Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
And Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion passes five to two.
Thank you. Next business item is ordinance 24-38, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025. Ms. Denise?
Thank you, council. Now that you've adopted a property tax rate, we can now adopt the annual budget for fiscal year 2025. Council, you've done a lot of work on this budget. We've met many, many times and discussed your priorities and goals. And I believe that we've provided you with a budget that is providing the best services for the city and is responsible with our tax dollars. So we're proposing adoption of ordinance 2438, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025 in the amount of 239,361,789. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any questions? No, there is, there is no sense. It's a city budget.
Any's don't matter in the budget.
Questions or discussion for item 7B? I'm seeing no questions, discussions or emotion. Councilmember Lamb?
I move to approve ordinance number 24-38, adopting the final budget for fiscal year 2025.
I will second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Lamb, seconded by councilmember Bloom. Is there a discussion to the motion? I'm not seeing any discussion. I will point out that this is double the budget when, since I got elected. Just saying.
It's capital projects.
It's kind of sad. Well, yeah, it's a lot of things. I mean, there's, there's a lot of reasons for it, but just is. It was 120 million, now it's 240. All right, seeing no more, let's go to a vote.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
No.
Council, or Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
No.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
I show the motion passes five to two. Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't begrudge anybody a no vote. I've voted no on plenty of budgets in this city over the last nine years. So it's my ninth budget. And I think I voted yes for about four of them. So there we go. All right, next item is Resolution 24-034, authorizing a preliminary official statement and an official statement and all other actions necessary in connection with the issuance and sale of not more than 12 million dollars of aggregate principal amount of sales tax revenue bonds, series 2024. Ms. Denise?
This is the last item that we will come to the council for related to this bond issuance. So we appreciate your support as we move this project forward. The 12 million dollars will be issued for multipurpose fields that will go on throughout the city. The majority of them in Rodwood Park. And then a lot of other improvements that will go on in Rodwood Park as well. We're excited about this project and we feel like it's a good use of debt for a project that will have, that will have shared generational benefits as well as being eligible for park impact fee reimbursement over time, which is really what the goal is of issuing debt on this project overall. So this is our final step and we appreciate your support, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions and discussion on this one? I do have one question, and I'm sorry that I didn't prep you for this. It's not a big hairy question, but it's a little hairy question. And that is, interest rates are relatively high, have been for the last year, year and a half. They're starting to soften a little bit. We expect a big Fed rate cut September, well, a Fed rate cut in September, bigger otherwise. All that said, are these bonds going to be refund, refundable at a future date? When, when and if interest rates drop?
Very good question. Um, yes, I did ask for call dates on these bonds so that we could refund them if opportunity exists in the future for us to change the interest rate or get a better interest rate on this. However, for the last couple of weeks, we've seen interest rates come down in the market. And so we believe this is a really good time for this bond issuance, especially as we have a pretty strong credit rating and there's an unsure market out there right now with a lot of changes in our political climates.
Right, right, yeah. And that's, and that's why I was asking. Because, because if in, in two years, four years, five years, it, we have a more favorable interest rate environment, we can retire these and issue a new one to
That is always a wise strategy. So yes, we have programmed call dates onto this bond issuance.
Perfect. I say, I knew you'd know the right words. I didn't know the right words, but lower interest rates, I understand that. All right, any further discussion or emotion? I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve Resolution 24-034.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by councilmember Jacob, seconded by councilmember Whitelock. Discussion to the motion. There's not a lot of deliberating going on despite what the screen says. All right. Oh, councilmember Whitelock, thank you.
I'm in favor of this because it spreads the debt out for a while and allows new people that are coming to help pay for the park that they'll use.
All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's go ahead and vote.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Thank you. I show the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, council.
Thank you. I move to approve consent, both 7A and 7B. All right.
Second.
Okay, a motion by councilmember Green to approve the consent items, seconded by councilmember Bloom. Is there a discussion to this motion? This motion does include a resolution? All right, so no discussion, let's go ahead and roll call vote on this one.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Thank you. I show that motion passes seven to zero.
Excellent. I do have a closed meeting on the agenda. Do we need a, we do need a closed meeting? What's the purpose? Is it on here? Sorry. All, all the purposes are listed on the agenda. Is there a specific one that we're closing for?
Yes, for character competence, mental health, personnel discussion.
All right, perfect. Councilmember Green?
I move that we temporarily recess the meeting to convene in a closed session to discuss the character, professional competence, physical or mental health of an individual.
Second.
Okay, a motion to close the meeting by Councilmember Green, seconded by Councilmember Lamb. Any discussion to that motion?
Do we just say and reconvene back here afterwards, or does that not need to be in?
Okay. Yep. Uh, Councilmember Whitelock has left the dais, but we can probably pass this without her. Do we need to roll? We'll roll call vote.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Shelton?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Bloom?
Yes.
Chair Jacob?
Absolutely. Yes.
Councilmember Whitelock?
Yes.
Vice Chair Lamb?
Yes, yes, yes.
Councilmember Bedore?
Yes.
Thank you, that motion passes seven to zero.
All right, we'll convene in the, uh, conference room for the closed session here in just, uh, five, four minutes.
Okay, Ellen, if you're.
Chair, we're still recording this room.
We'll go ahead and call the city council meeting back to order in open session. It's 10:06 PM. I'll entertain a final motion just because we'll do it that way since we can point.
Move to adjourn?
Second.
A motion to adjourn by Councilmember Whitelack, seconded by Councilmember Green, all in favor say aye. Call it done.